...through June 30th, 2024. Tonight's workshop consists of eight sections covered by 93 slides. The accompanying draft operating budget can be found online on the city's website and was included as part of the publisher agenda on Thursday, May 11. After a discussion of the workshop guidelines and goals, the budget overview, general fund overview, reserve funds overview, and successor agency overview will be presented by Director of Finance, Michelle Manigan. Following the overviews, the council will receive updates from department representatives. Then we'll move on to a review of CIP projects planned for fiscal year 2324 and end the evening with a discussion of decision packages for the council's consideration and direction. On behalf of the entire city staff, we are pleased to present the draft fiscal year 2324 operating budget this evening. I would like to thank the mayor and city council for your leadership and support throughout the year and for setting a course that reflects the values and priorities of the community. I would also like to thank the department directors and their teams for working diligently to prepare a balanced operating budget, which will form a work plan for the upcoming year supporting the implementation and realization of the council's budget goals and objectives. And finally, I'd like to provide a special acknowledgement to the finance team and especially Michelle Manigan, Sam Lou Cox, and Victoria Hogan for their long days and late nights working on this year's budget. The city's budget memorializes the city's capacity to effectively fund and deliver essential municipal services that contribute to the quality of life enjoyed by residents and businesses. The city's budget serves as a financial and policy plan that guides decisions made during each fiscal year and is the single most important document we have for determining the future of the city. In reviewing our performance over the past year and looking forward to the goals of the coming year, the budget provides insight into the opportunities and challenges we face. So why do we budget? For a number of reasons. To provide an informed estimate of anticipated costs and expenses. To support continuous improvement in municipal services, programs, and projects. To communicate the goals of the city council in an operational plan. To develop a guide for staff in a statement of priorities and financial terms. And finally, to hold government accountable. Discussion, comments, and questions will be encouraged throughout the workshop this evening. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Director of Finance, Michelle Manigan.
So just to set up the bylines for how we came up with today's budget. We started with our forecast. And we obtained that forecast from a number of experts and economists and the city's own consultant HDL companies. And the forecast for the next coming year is there is a slowdown happening and it's only a matter of when is it going to happen? Is it going to happen for the next 12 months or a little bit longer? Then, based on that forecast, we set our strategy. And our strategy is always to be conservative. We would love to just be conservative. Our revenue estimates come back with a surplus at mid-year. That's easier to do. And plan for the remainder of the fiscal year than going the other way when we have to reduce revenues and make some other decisions. So the overall tactics were to continue to deliver our quality core municipal services. To address our deferred maintenance operational needs. To maximize opportunities for grant funding and general partnerships before we use our general fund revenues. And to get innovation through software and technology upgrades when we can. The adopted budget for all funds in the budget is forty million and one, forty point one million dollars in expenditures, offset by forty point five million in revenues. That is all city funds. The remainder of this presentation will focus on the city's general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city. This is where we record most of our general tax revenues and expenditures. We fund the day-based services of the city that aren't funded by restricted funds like grant funds and things like that. This also holds most of the reserves in our city policy that you'll see towards the end. So our proposed budget has estimated revenues of thirty point six million dollars, offset by proposed expenditures of twenty nine point eight million dollars. So there is a surplus right now of eight hundred forty one thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars that we will address at the end of the presentation when we talk about what the city council wants to do with these funds when we get to the decision package section of the presentation. So what is driving? Let's see. I don't know. The general fund revenues. What is included in the city's general fund revenues? Our general fund revenues are based on a four percent assessed valuation increase. City's historical increase in assessed valuation has been closer to six to eight percent over the last few fiscal years due to all the new residential development that's come onto our tax roll. So we are still conservative and estimating a four percent increase for next year. Our number for sales tax and measure GG, which is our additional one percent tax transaction and use tax in the city, is flat next year based upon the estimates provided by HDL companies. Although we have still experienced some high fuel taxes in our city, there are other industries that make up these revenues, such as the general consumer goods or grocery stores and restaurants that are starting to see a flattening of retail sale activity in our city and in some cases, a decline from the previous 12 months. And that's just indicators of slowing down in the economy overall. If you recall from our mid-year budget presentation last February, we had this new revenue in the 2223 revenue budget for cannabis tax of six hundred twenty thousand dollars, which we removed because some of the businesses were open this fiscal year. However, we're putting that revenue back into our projections for next fiscal year. And just to remind the council members and public, this six hundred and twenty thousand is a conservative figure because it only represents revenue from one retail cannabis business and four cultivation businesses. And the current permits are set to expire this November, so we expect more than those five businesses to be open by then. The city's UUT, which is our utility users tax and our TOT revenues, have been strong and is kind of helping with the flattening of the sales tax and measure GG tax. Occupancy has continued to then be high consistently in our motels. And based on revenues received through April 2023, our utility user tax, particularly for electricity and gas, is experiencing higher rates, higher taxes to the city due to higher rates from those providers. So we have a nine percent increase proposed in next year's budget. The three percent CRNR revenue is based on some new revenue expected when the new solid waste agreement comes to the council this summer. Building, engineering, and planning revenues, those are most of our user fees, are trending with a three percent decline because development activity in the fiscal year is starting to decline as a lot of those recent redevelopment residential projects have completed either last fiscal year or this fiscal year. So it is common for those costs to fluctuate. And you will see in the expenditures there is, to the extent that there's contracted services related to those revenues, they are reduced as well. Our parking citation revenue is increasing twenty percent. That's just based on historical average since COVID-19 as we have been consistent in our reinforcement of the parking rules. And then lastly, the reimbursement from the general fund to the gas, from the gas tax, excuse me, to the general fund is declining forty percent because of the city's maintenance and effort level is increasing in order for us to be eligible for measuring revenue that we receive from the Orange County Transportation Authority. This is an analysis they do, a benchmark they set to cities every three years. And we're getting a new benchmark starting this next fiscal year. And our general fund support account, which we have to fund our street maintenance costs, is going up. Therefore, the gas tax amount that can fund those costs is going down. So what is not included in these revenue assumptions? Well, we already mentioned revenue for all cannabis businesses is not included in our revenue projections. The city has been undergoing a user fee study for the last one-plus years and that is still ongoing. So any impacts from that fee study is not included here. And also, the reimbursement from the North Orange County Public Safety Collaborative is expected to end as far as the city's participation, June 30th, 2023. And the council will have an expenditure offset related to that grant revenue. And we'll pause here just before we continue on and see if there's any questions from the council.
A question, if I may. The first is, you're expecting UUT and TOT revenues to increase by nine percent even though we've converted three of our motels to project home keys? Therefore, we're reducing the number of motel available, you know, to over a hundred? So how do we project that only a nine percent increase to go over into the TOT?
Well, I will preface by saying some of those motels, for example, the Tahiti and the Stanton Inn Suites, we stopped receiving revenue from those motels back in the fall of 2020. So our TOT hasn't shown a decline since those motels stopped having, generating TOT tax for the city. I believe the city managed to provide the council and our analysis by motel for the last several years. And you'll see that occupancy has kind of distributed to other motels than the city. So.
And this trend is included in our HDL forecast. So with the given availability of rooms, that's what this increase is based on. So yes, it's not incorrect and it is projected to grow slightly. And I noticed that you put the UUT and TOT together. Do you mind if you have some breakdown of those two?
It's in the budget book.
Okay. Great. And then secondly, in the first two slides, you have talked about revenue for all city funds being forty point five million. And then in the last slide, for the budget bottom line, you have revenues close to thirty. You don't have the extra ten million? Is that like housing forty or what is that?
It's a mix of a housing authority, gas tax measure, and all the different. The city has about thirty-plus funds. So we have a sewer maintenance fund. There is a budget summary in the first section of the budget book that lists all of the thirty-plus funds of the city.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And then just to answer your question, I do have the breakdown of UUT and TOT. The UUT portion is going up ten percent and the trans occupancy tax is four percent. But collectively, when you compare them, it's nine percent.
Thank you.
So this just shows a trend in the general fund revenues of the last, since 2014, 15. As you see, the city's revenues have been trending for the most part upwards. 2019, 20 was our COVID year. And you will see from the 2023 to the 2024 budget, we do have an increase. This chart just kind of breaks down in category detail what makes up the general fund's thirty point six million dollars. But the better visual part is this pie chart. It kind of shows how diversified our general fund revenues are. It is a good sign when the pie is not all segregated in one revenue sector because when you have a downturn in the economy, you don't want to be totally segregated and impacted by one revenue stream. For example, some cities might have property tax that takes up fifty percent or more of their pie. And so as property taxes values stay the same or decrease, then that really impacts the general fund revenues. And in this, we have our three, we have three distinct areas. Property tax, transaction use tax, and sales tax that kind of make up the three biggest pies. That just gives you a reflection of our per se by revenue structure. This chart is just a visual of where the city's property tax has come from in the last 10 years, particularly our assessed valuation, which tries our property tax. And it shows that assessed valuation has increased one point six billion dollars. That's B with a billion, which is seventy-nine percent from the last 10 years. So that is a good story for Stanton. The graphic on the right is kind of hard to see the details of it. Stanton is the red bar. And we, out of every dollar of property tax that the county collects, the city of Stanton is only receiving what's in that red bar, which is about fourteen cents. So the city receives about fourteen cents of every property tax dollar that our property taxpayers are making. And before we leave the revenue section, are there any additional questions to the council?
One last one I forgot to ask, I apologize. Regarding the user fee study, I know that it's been going on for over a year now. Do you know when it's expected to be completed?
So the delay from that is because of the turnover in our department. They need to have a very thorough pool in reviewing what those fees are and the effort of work that goes into calculating each of those. So we are letting our new department directors kind of get established of the city and then we will be reengaging with that effort there this fall. So I would anticipate, honestly, probably by next year's budget workshop, as someone would bring back the proposed TOT. And going along with that, that contract is expiring in June. So you'll be seeing an amendment to that contract at one of your June meetings. So that completes our overview of the general fund revenues. Now we're going to get to general fund expenditure assumptions. Overall, general fund expenditures are increasing by one percent in the next fiscal year as our proposed budget stands before the impact of the decision packages. But I do want to remember the city council, that, remind them that, well, before we get to that, I'll just go over what's in our assumptions. Our assumptions include an increase in both our OCFA and our OCSD contract costs. It also includes some increases in our public works areas, such as chartering maintenance contract costs, our solid waste consulting costs that is offset by the anticipated revenue from our soon-to-be, we hope, approved CRNR agreement. And we do have some benefit costs that are increasing. The level of benefit to our employees in the proposed budget is the same, but the cost of the insurance and health insurance and benefits is going up. And so the proposed budget does include increases there. So this chart shows that between 2223, our amended budget is twenty nine point forty-four million and we're going up to twenty nine point seventeen. So this appears to be flagged, that's about a one percent increase. I wanted to remind the council that the 2223 amended budget does include about a million dollars of one-time expenditures that were approved in the adopted budget last June, as well as budget carryovers from projects that were not completed last year and had to get added to the 2223 budget. And finally, some one-time expenditures that were approved in our mid-year budget. So when you take out that one million dollars of one-time revenues, the true increase apples to apples is five percent in our proposed budget. This just kind of gives you a summary of the breakdown of the proposed general fund expenditures by department. But this chart kind of shows you where those dollars are distributed in a pie chart. So you will see that seventy percent of the city's general fund budget is donated to public safety. The city's own public safety team, which is parking enforcement and code enforcement, is part of that gray chart. They represent about five percent or one point five million of that seventy percent chart. This graphic just shows the history of general fund revenues compared to general fund expenditures over the last several years. And you always want the revenues to be, the blue line, to be higher than the orange line because that means that you're getting more money than you're spending. And you will see that, for the most part, that has always been the case. And that is the case, you know, in our proposed budget here. There were a couple of times, like this fiscal year around 1819, where the city council made the decision to pay five million dollars of its public safety program's unfunded actuarial liability. And so that caused that.
Question, if I may, please. For a non-departmental, is that the city attorney or?
No, the city attorney is rolled up in the administration department. The non-departmental expenditures are mostly the economic development loan repayment from Rodeo 39. It also includes, we share some of our, we have a sales tax sharing agreement with Anaheim for a business that crosses both quarters of Anaheim and Stanton. So the city has to rebate some of the tax to the city of Anaheim.
And then the transfers out, I already noticed that it decreased quite a bit from last year from three twenty-five to one hundred twenty-one thousand. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, the transfers out is in the fiscal year 2223 amended budget. Our transfers out include some capital project funding from the general fund for one of the street projects. In addition. That is two hundred and nine thousand. That is the bulk of it. That's two hundred and nine thousand of our three hundred and twenty-five thousand, 2223 budget, is the funding of capital project funds. And so when you take that out, it's pretty consistent year to year. The general fund transfers are really the city's grant match for the back grant program. And the senior transportation program, where eighty percent of our senior transportation program is funded with the grant from the Orange County Transportation Authority. And the city's required to have a twenty percent match. And then lastly, it's the general fund portion that's funding Stanton Central Park maintenance. So we have about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of Stanton Central Park maintenance costs in budget in another fund outside of the general fund. Fifty thousand of that is funded from a donation. And the remainder is a transfer out from the general fund to a fund. Any other questions on general fund revenues or expenditures before we go into our reserves? This is just a bar chart showing the same thing the line chart was showing. So this is a dollar that, this is from the CalPERS website and this is just to communicate to the city council and the public how purse funding for retirement plans works. This shows that employers are paying thirty-two cents of every dollar from the funding of the retirement plans. The remainder of the funding comes from investment earnings from CalPERS and from CalPERS members. This is another graphic that kind of shows how, how much money CalPERS members puts back into the California economy. This is a chart for the city of Stanton and it shows how much is in our budget for CalPERS payments for next fiscal year. Okay, this is where the real story is. This shows, based on the city council's priority to pay not just our minimum unfunded accrued liability that CalPERS requires every year, to pay a little bit more beyond that. And you'll see that now we're seeing an impact to what our future payments are and what our funded status of our plans are. So I can get this pointer to work. Based on our meet, rose recent actuarial evaluation reports from CalPERS, you will see that this year we pay a little bit more than seven hundred thousand dollars in our unfunded liability. And you'll see a drop going to next fiscal year and beyond of what we're being required to pay. That is because out of the city's four pension plans, three of them are super funded. That means that they, CalPERS has more than a hundred percent of the unfunded accrued liability already in assets. And only our first tier, which we call our miscellaneous tier one plan, is eighty percent funded. And that is in line with the average of all CalPERS agencies' funding status statewide. So the council will make some good decisions upfront. Okay, now we're getting to our reserve funds overview. Each budget cycle in June, when we renew the adopted budget, staff gives council opportunity to adopt a reserve policy for the next fiscal year. Some agencies only adopt a general fund reserve policy. But as of a couple of years ago, our reserve policy has included other things, not just the general fund. Staff does not have any recommendations for any changes to the city's existing reserve policy when you, when you see it for adoption next month. So I just wanted to point that out. So just for the benefit of those, what our reserves fund, these are the liquid assets or the cash that is set aside for specific purposes like an economic downturn or economic uncertainty or some disaster, a major repair that has to be made. It's kind of different, it's kind of different savings accounts for different purposes. So the city's general fund reserves, it has a couple of targets. For economic uncertainty reserve, we have targeted twenty percent of the general fund operating expenses, which is five point nine million dollars. And the current balance is six million, it's fully funded. Same with our emergency disaster contingency reserve. If there was an emergency disaster contingency, our target is to have ten percent of general fund operating expenditures held in assets. And we currently have three million dollars. For the capital reserve, we really, you'll notice when we get to the CIP that we really try not to fund general fund money with capital. We want to try to maximize our grant funding resources and other funds of the city first. But just in case we can't, the city staff cannot find another restricted funding source or a grant to pursue a capital project that needs to be made, we have a target of five million dollars in the general fund to funding the capital improvement needs, that's fully funded. And in addition to that, we have a million dollars in our sewer enterprise fund for any sewer capital needs. The general fund also includes various equipment and technology reserves of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars each, as well, our fleet maintenance internal service bank has a hundred thousand dollars in our reserve for vehicle replacements. And lastly, the city council's reserve policy includes a fifty percent of the unfunded actuarial liability with CalPERS to be held in a post-employment benefits reserve. As of our last audit of financial statements, our unfunded, our net pension plan is one point nine million dollars. And we have almost four million dollars held in the Section 115 trust with CARs, the public agency retirement system. Of course, I say that because that net pension number could be something different when we close our, when we close our books this year. Since that's an actuarially determined number, that fluctuates based on how the CalPERS, that's number four of Rodeo, performs and how they adjust some of their assumption, assumption benefits or how they determine that liability. So they are all fully funded. This chart shows the general fund reserves, the dollar amounts in the proposed budget and the percentage of operating, general fund operating expenses that each reserve is. If you take it in total, for eighty-nine percent, the general fund operating expenses is either funded in our reserve is either funded in our reserve or is available unassigned, which is available for any purpose of this council wishes to appropriate that for. Any questions on our reserve funds before we move to the successor agency overview? Yes?
Yeah, when was the last time that we used our reserves?
I have been here since 2020. We haven't had to use our reserves then, so I'm not aware.
Just, just so we can save the system, like ask, you know, maybe some information about, I guess, maybe this reserve is stronger.
Okay, so councilmember Torres and the mayor provided information. The last time we used the reserves was 2018. We have a policy whenever we use our reserves that our next goal is to immediately refund it. So I wouldn't recommend, you don't want to hold too much of your monies in reserves because I think it paints a skewed picture of the city's fiscal health, and it may be giving you things that you actually could afford to do. So certainly, we can review the policy, but this is a pretty healthy reserve fund. If you look at, you have eighty-nine percent of your operating budget, and I mean, something would have to be catastrophically wrong for us to have to dip into a significant portion of that.
Do you by any chance know what the average percentage for most cities would have in their reserves, as a portion of their operating budget?
Most cities don't do it by percentage, so we would have to go calculate. Most cities have a pegged dollar amount that they try to match. So we don't know that off the top of our head because we're a little bit unusual in how we set our limit, but if council is interested, we can certainly look at maybe some of our neighboring cities in the North Orange County region.
I noticed that in your chart, you didn't include the vehicle with these numbers or about a thousand sewer maintenance. Why is that?
The chart on this page is only our general fund, so the sewer maintenance and the biopower and other events of the city. So we really try on recording to keep this general fund separate from the other. Any other question? Okay. Yes, sir.
Say, we're currently, or by the end of next year, given this year, we should have ten million eight hundred thousand on general fund on the side.
Yes, that is for June thirtieth. That's in line with the mid-year budget we provided in February.
That could be used for any general fund expenditure?
In theory, any of these monies can be used for any general fund expenditure, but truly, yes, that ten million is over and beyond the specific buckets the city council has set aside in its current reserve policy.
Thank you.
And one more follow-up to councilmember Torres's question. The mayor provided additional clarification. City council's historical policy up to now has been before dipping into reserves to make operational cuts first, and then the reserves will be a backup.
In 2012, we hit our reserves really hard, and it was really, really touching out for a while there because we had reserves, other cities around us were trying to figure it out. And so sometimes these amounts seem large, but what a crisis is, they're, you're really glad you got it.
Could the ten million eight hundred thousand, could that be used in the housing fund?
And to answer your question, Mr. Taylor, technically, anything in the general fund is discretionary at the city council's level. So that's, it could be used for anything. It could be used for housing, it could be whatever your pleasure, whatever the majority's pleasure. Okay. So the next series of slides is because in a previous meeting, the city council wanted to know a little bit about the successor agency overview. So the city council does not adopt a budget for the city's successor agency to the Stanton Community Development Agency. And that is because those expenditures are programmed through state law. But we will just give you an overview about that. So in 2011, the state legislature approved legislation to dissolve all redevelopment agencies in the state of California. That actually happened on February first, 2012. So as a result of that, redevelopment, redevelopment agencies had to stop their operations as of February one, 2012, had to come up with how much cash they have as of that certain date. Based on that cash, how much liabilities or bonds or agreements do they enter into as of that certain date? And had to go through a whole audit process through independent CPA firms, through audit reports that had to get ultimately approved by the State Department of Finance. For the Stanton successor agency, oh, excuse me, so then we don't talk about. So the city's responsible for submitting a governing document as to the payments made to the successor agency during each year called a recognized obligation payment schedule. The city submits this to the county oversight board for review, and it ultimately goes to the State Department of Finance. That is what many successor agencies who don't have what the Stanton successor agency has, which is a last and final recognized obligation payment schedule. So all the, all other successor agencies in Orange County who don't have a last and final recognized obligation payment schedule have to put together this, what we're calling ROCS, every single fiscal year. And it has to be done in a time such that the county oversight board and the state can approve it. But in 2020, Stanton prepared and got approval from the State Department of Finance its last and final ROCS. So we don't have to do anything anymore. As of this point in time, back then, July of 2021, the total obligations of the successor agency at that time was nearly seventy-eight million dollars. Most of that is outstanding bonds that the former redevelopment agency issued and has payments that are going on through fiscal year twenty-fourty-two or something. So we don't do anything. The way the successor agency gets money is twice each year. We get money from the state from what they call redevelopment property tax funds, and that goes to pay six months of obligations for the successor agency. For example, by June first, in a couple of weeks, we're expected to get some money. We're going to get that money, and that money is going to be used to pay all of the successor agency's bills that are due between July one, 2023, and December thirty-first, 2023. But we'll get another influx of money in January of next year that's going to be used to pay the bills for the six months between January and June. And that's how it's going to go all the way through 2042. And this entire document is available on the finance webpage, and it shows the cash flow and how much redevelopment property tax revenue we should be expecting from the state for the next twenty fiscal years. Okay, any questions before we move on? The mayor just wanted to make a point in relation to the successor agency and the other local groups that get some of the money that, they get eighty-three percent of every property tax dollar already in addition to a piece of the pie of the successor agency. Point taken, thank you. Any other questions related to any of the sections we've covered so far? Before we move on to section six, which is the department accomplishments and work. Okay. So we've gone through five sections. We'll now move on to section six of tonight's workshop. Each department will provide a high-level overview of major noteworthy or interesting accomplishments from the current year, which were funded as part of last year's fiscal operating budget. And as proposed, and then they'll go over their work plans for the upcoming fiscal year as proposed in tonight's operating budget. For detailed information related to departmental revenues and expenditures, all of that can be found in the draft operating budget book that was attached to tonight's agenda item. So again, this is just a high-level overview. Of course, the departments do so many more things that are highlighting, but that would then take us through probably the early hours of term warning. So we're trying to keep it short and sweet. But I do want to highlight, this is a great opportunity for the council to understand when you adopt an operating budget, this is what it looks like in practice implementation and reality, the accomplishments that we'll be sharing with you tonight. So to kick off the departmental presentations, we'll begin with the administration department, and I'd like to introduce city clerk Patricia Vasquez.
Thank you, now, mayor's city councilmembers. So the accomplishment within the city clerk's office this fiscal year is that we've created the implementation of new electoral district boundaries based on the city council's amount, which was quite a feat in itself. So I think we've done a great job in moving that forward. Conducted and completed the November eighth, 2022 general municipal election. Implemented and completed migration of the city's Laser Beach Content Management System to a cloud-based platform. Currently, our Laser Beach Cloud is a digital document management system in which a majority of the city's records, such as minutes, resolutions, ordinances, and contracts, the name of you, have been digitized utilizing the system, which allows electronic storage and digital access to these sites. Implemented a pilot program utilizing Zoom to broadcast the city council meetings. Completed a biannual update of the city's conflict and interest code. Managed the recruitment process to fill eleven BPC Council Commission committee. And today responded to over one hundred and fifty public records that request. The work plan for the city clerk's office in 2023, 24 is to conduct an in-depth review of the city's outdated records retention policy. The last update was conducted in 2008, so working for upgrade with changes in technology and how we store our records. The next item is implement a Laser Beach web link online records public portal. This will provide public access to the city's public records via the city's website. So important is they'll have a public link on our website so the members of the public are able to access them with agendas, resolutions, and ordinances, kind of bring up staff, kind of lead them to conduct their own research. Of course, they'll have access to that as well. And plan and prepare for the November twenty-second general municipal election. I can only say my question.
Thank you. I'll be presenting on behalf of human resources this evening. As you know, our permanent HR manager is off maternity leave. Our interim manager flew out to New York tonight for her son's college graduation. So I will be presenting on behalf. So we did a lot of great things in human resources this year. Just want to highlight a few of them. One of them that was super exciting, and I have an HR background, so I know what a big deal this is, was implementing the NeoGov Insight Recruitment Software System. So I will tell you that we were one of the last cities in all of California to continue to collect recruitment applications, sorry, applications for employment manually, basically. So we were able to modernize that, and we now have a system that's used by probably ninety-eight percent of all local agencies in California. So it's very nice because end users create an account. They are able to build resumes and cover letters in there, and then you're able to then customize it within the system to apply for other jobs. So it really makes it a lot easier for the end user, makes us an easier agency to apply to instead of having to do a very unique application. So we're very excited about that. We're able to screen those applications with supplemental questions, all the technology behind this, taking care of that. We're able to communicate with applicants using their system. So it's, it's just really made our process so much more efficient. And you can see this year alone, we administered twenty recruitments. So just think about taking all of that work and cutting the time down to maybe twenty-five percent. So that was a great, great implementation effort by our staff. We also are very proud that we were able to conduct an in-house compensation study. So lots of cities do these on an annual basis. The goal of that, of course, is to make sure that the compensation schedule for a city is competitive within the local labor market. Most cities hire consultants to do this at the cost of forty to sixty thousand dollars per project. Our staff was able to take a few months and collected this data and then input it into all the worksheets, were able to calculate all the different portials, and so really grateful for their efforts, and that was then able to help us provide projections for you this evening. We also, of course, hosted three employee recognition wellness events. We're so appreciative of everything our employees do. We're grateful to the council for the budget you provide for that. And I think most of you attended most of those, and I think they went really well. And finally, our HR department of one also serves as the city's risk manager, and they were able to not only manage our claims process, but collect eighteen thousand dollars in reimbursement for damages to city property. Looking forward for next year for the work plan for HR, we're really going to take a deep dive into our policy. A lot of our policies haven't been updated for five, ten, fifteen years. So we'll be working in conjunction with CJPIA, who has a lot of best practice policies, looking at what our current policies are and where appropriate, either taking the template from CJPIA or modifying it to make sure it's representing what we need as a city. We're also going to continue focusing on making sure we have the best workforce possible that's looking not only at salary, but also at training, succession planning, so employees can see a path forward if they stay at Stanton, and also just making some of those basic things a little bit easier. So really focusing on making a great end user experience for our employees. That concludes our presentation for human resources. Next, I'd like to call up Steve Martin, our IT specialist, to present on the IT portion.
Can you get closer to you? Oh, perfect.
All right. So I guess we'll go over the slide there. Sorry, excuse this, all right. We like to work orders and service requests. So it's been very challenging being in the department of one, also having to deal with all the constant changeover from boots to the ground to the IT department. I've been able to actually take over a very challenging IT server room and get it to a very solid state. So based on this information, I've been able to really do a pretty good job of keeping customer service and relations with getting everyone's work order request and handling all the disasters at the same time. Managing the IT infrastructure, I actually wrote probably a fifty-three day report in great, great detail of all the things that was skewed and how I was able to fix those spewities. So ensuring integrity and security of the city and IT infrastructure, I have a little background in the United States Army. I was Information Systems Security Officer. So I was trained by the ISSO standards and federal standard policies. So those guidelines I've been operating off of is off federal standards. And that's what I've been practicing as far as our ecology and infrastructure. And so let's go over the replaced city outdated firewalls. So when I came aboard in the server room, it was quite interesting because everything was on its last leg. There was no lifecycle expectancy put in place. So it was kind of a challenging scenario. Where do you start? Because it's like, there's all these holes in the dam. Where do you put your, you know, finger first to start to leave? But I had to go based on criteria of importance, which is the most, the ones that cause the most impact, and work my way down to the lesser one. But we're a very, very solid state. We're able to replace a lot of the old legacy equipment. We're down to just three more servers, and we'll be a pretty strong state. And then at that point, we start focusing on worrying about hardening our security, worrying about the cybersecurity threats that are coming. And so there's a lot of challenges. A lot of the expectations is understanding what is the impact to the city based on, like, example disasters, right? So you have to think, what are the common disasters in the city of Stanton? Most of those would be like power outages, car accidents, you know, water damage, things like that. But we've done a really good job and basically I can come up with good disaster recovery plans to cover those scenarios. And working on that by knowing that this is the old legacy way of thinking, we eventually changed it over where we got a lot of our services through the cloud provider. So should there be an impact that our power is still able to operate through three sixty-five online sources of, like with the pandemic, that was pretty good. All right. Installed and configured new computers. So we had a bunch of old computers that were probably about seven years past their life expectancy. And I was able to find a way to get them replaced. And all, as far as I can see, is all departments, they all have new systems, and that should be good to go for at least five to six years as an average lifecycle. And install new in-house access control system. So working on eventually getting to a point where the whole city as a whole will have all keyless access one-on-one system. So I found an alternative solution and how to make it cheaper. And also with the corporate, you know, And also with the corporate yard, we had old camera systems that failed, quotes were outrageous. But I was able to actually incorporate new camera systems at the fraction of cost that they were trying to bid me. So this is the fact that the equipment I used in the IT was compatible with the equipment that they come with. A lot of amazing stuff's happened. I'm looking forward to a lot more advancements in helping the city save money. Been able to eliminate old legacy little potlines. And with thirty thousand, we got it down to fifteen, like always, essentially down to zero. So there's lots of growth, progression in that part. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Martin. So just want to highlight some, expand upon a little bit more what Martin provided in terms of our work plan for next year. The city has issued an RFP for IT contract support services. And so I'll be working really closely with Martin and the new IT vendor. We're really excited. Eighteen vendors bid on our proposal. And, you know, compared to other cities who put out IT RFPs, our budget was probably a third of what other cities put out. So we're really excited to still get that much interest. And we're really looking this year to standardize and centralize some of those IT services that our department of one has been providing to date so that we can provide more space for Martin to work on the higher level projects and better customer service for our end users. So that concludes our presentation for IT. And next, I'd like to turn it over to our finance.
Mayor Damsel, it's my pleasure to bring you the four most impactful accomplishments for the finance department. And so we are going to start here. In October twenty twenty-two, the California State Auditor released a finding of the city's fiscal health. So here they were trying to see if any local agency was at risk of any trouble. And what they found was Stanton ranked number one in our area, which encompasses Los Angeles and Orange County. And when you consider the cities that are in those counties, this is a very good thing too that we could get to brag about. So it's definitely in our list of accomplishments. Overall, in the state, we ranked twelve, but let's stay with number one in LA and Orange County. The second thing I'd like to point is to the, we received the Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Government's Finance Officers Association. So this is the city's twenty-fifth award in this category. And what that is, is, you know, every year we have to present financial statements. We have to prepare an effort, so we have comprehensive financial report. And we have to meet the general accounting principles to that. When we submit our annual report to the CHIEPOE, we actually have to go above those standards in order to be considered for this award. So this just goes to show how we strive for financial transparency. And these reports are also, they help the end user or reader find more, he's got a better understanding of what is happening in the financial reports. So we're glad to present that. The finance department also was able to push forward the, our new purchasing policy. So a new purchasing policy helps us control our federal internal controls as well as making sure that we are in compliance with state regulations, federal regulations, when we have those federal awards. And so this was a massive project that we definitely collaborated with, with the administration departments of the county. And we were able to bring that forward. And fourth is we also transitioned investment portfolio management to a third party. So through this, we were able to have a dedicated team of professionals who do this every day. Take a look at the funds that were available for investments with the city and diversify our portfolio so that we are still in line with the city's investment policies and make sure that we have liquidity to pay our bills, but still make those interest income. So that's our accomplishments here. And looking forward for our work plan for next fiscal year is going to be to complete the user fee study. Our second is to update the business license ordinance. And through this, we would like to aim for simplicity. We feel that this will help in just to increase compliance from our business members and just throughout. We would also like to issue a request for proposal for our enterprise resource point. And this is for the city's finance software. So we have the same software as Spring Growth since two thousand and six. And so it is, it has been good to us for all these years. But we are noticing a decrease of resources that has been dedicated to the, to the betterment of this program through the, through Spring Growth. And with that, we'd like to prepare, we're seeing those yellow flags come up. We'd like to prepare and make sure that we get an RFP out to see what we can do to make sure that the transition to the new software happens in our terms and our plan with the resources that we have available. The other two items on here is definitely want to focus on employee development and cross-training and to continue to update and streamline operational process.
Thank you, Sia. Okay, we'll turn it over to Community Development.
The time where I have our assistant planner Patricia Garcia and our planning technician, Francesa Fiano, present our work plan and our accomplishments. So we'll get started with her.
Thank you, our members of the council. Throughout this fiscal year, we continue to do our plan checks for both residential and commercial development projects. We currently have thirty-one commercial plan checks in progress and a hundred and ten are residential plan checks in progress. Inspections that are currently underway have eighteen commercial and a hundred and two are residential. And I would like to comment as well that we continue to receive feedback from a lot of public, different contractors that we've worked with. At the counter, that part turnaround times for plan checks are some of the quickest in the area for other cities. So that's, I don't know if you can still look at it. Our current timeline is for plan checks, middle is ten business days, and then it's any sort of middle, five business days. We've also done a review of our handouts on our website. These are for, that tend to be pulled quite often. And this allows homeowners, you know, provide instructions on what they need to provide to us at the counter. So it just helps expedite the process and provide it for them. And yeah, just provides them. We've also been able to use our portal to review, to handle all our plan checks. Which is where we provide comments to both any applicants regarding their plan checks. So that's been our main call communication. We also promote them through there as well. Regarding our other accomplishments for our openings, we had the reopening of Super Team, bringing them to their location. Right there on my morning's videos, those are original locations, the next day it's over. And we're currently going through the construction phase, or the improvement phase on the north side of the building as well. Were we able to see the warehouse itself, that we sense occupied a little space that, as the Super Team was in. We're also seeing side improvements on the north side of the street, so we're excited for those spaces there. We expect to see that in the next coming months. And also heard Boya Perro takes it over that, where the old taco was at, just up the street here on the beach. We've also had our, we can back up the Business Alliance meetings, which will allow members of business owners in the area to talk to staff members here and collaborate together to help them grow their businesses in the city. We've also continued our Talk on the Block events, which allows residents and other community members opportunities to discuss different residential, commercial, development projects in the city. And we continue to assist families, businesses, prefer a permanent process. And there are also go for the construction period inspection.
The accomplishment of year twenty twenty thirteen. The planning division has had many notable accomplishments. Including the certification of the housing element. We have also submitted how the element ready to be on support additionally. We have approved and completed two hundred residential units for the year. Fourteen simple houses, one and seventeen extra buildings. We continue to support our planning commission, providing them with the necessary mortgage protection that they need to take in the documentation. This fiscal year, we have offers various planning initiatives for the development, including a new three thousand five hundred square foot warehouse on eight four three one Electric. A new four hundred square foot steel building office on eight two new road avenue. We are currently talking with our first best nine block project on one zero eight one Oak Street. And we have received a competition that we're currently reviewing and offering for a new medical building on one zero six and two home court. My work plan for the upcoming fiscal year, including the work of any activity, such as working on a general plan, to help develop a family with these support reports. We also intend to use a grant fund that we received for the model one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for developing a chapter to the planning framework. And then to move forward with adoption of our town's.
All right, thank you so much, Patricia and Carlos. And next, we'll move over to Community Services.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. It is my pleasure to provide a list of accomplishments from the department this evening. I'll begin with facilitating our Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission meetings. We've held eight meetings this year. They have a number of action items. Most noteworthy is we hope to come out with a park system for the city council to review. We have a large number of part-time and full-time staff. We take pride on staff training development throughout the year. We have a few leadership retreats with our full-time staff, all hands in service throughout the year, all staff. In addition to regional trainings, regular consortiums, we're part of the National Parks Recreation Association, the California Parks and Recreation Association, and the California PIO. In addition, we facilitate the Stanton Collaborative Meeting meetings. This past year, we held nine meetings. We have currently four eighty partner agencies consisting of community force-based organizations, local schools, county agencies, enforcement, all coming together for topic-driven discussions and really a safety net for the community and make sure we're all leveraging the resources appropriately. In addition, we did facilitate the Citizens Academy this year. This was in a collaborative effort with all the departments to really educate our public. That was an attendance, seventeen attendees this year, educating on the operations of the city. We implemented a new facility rental program, just providing a little bit more access for nonprofits, not working in terms of sponsorship or be waivers if there's a need. And I do want to congratulate the team on recent implementation of our new CivicRite software. Series of months and meetings to work with our partners at CivicRite and get all of our staff on board. But the end goal of improving our user experience, our goals for staff and for the public, and at a reduced terminal cost as well. I'll introduce, can you say this is Mayor Ashley King?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you guys for having me tonight. So accomplishments for communications and PIO. So this year, we put out three issues of our Stanton Express magazine covering all of the community services opportunities for fall, winter, spring, and summer. That is a joint effort with the entire department PIO staff put that together. We distributed that to about sixteen thousand households and then to about sixteen hundred. Compliment that at all of our sites throughout the year. We also facilitate the city manager's newsletter, which is compiled by our marketing assistant. That goes out the first Thursday of every month to about fourteen hundred subscribers. That is put together by help from all the departments, specifically the PIO committee. PIO committee meets monthly. That is comprised of representatives from all of our city departments. They are integral in implementing the style guide through our departments and maintaining the city's website. They will also play a large part in the city's reframing efforts and have that with our contractors for that project. While implementing the city website, we also take a good look at those high search rate pages. So right now for this fiscal year, our high search rate pages are the city map, which is that GIS map that can be found on the lead to Stanton page. The slash pad, short-term rentals, job opportunities, and business licenses. So the committee looks at those monthly, just to make sure that we're maintaining those pages specifically, keeping them the most up-to-date, because those are our high-traffic pages. We have about two hundred and forty thousand page views a year, which I think is fantastic. And seventy-five thousand unique users for this past fiscal year. We are also have a heavy presence on social media. We are mostly on Facebook and Instagram, at least daily. But we also utilize Nextdoor, Twitter, and LinkedIn on an as-meetic basis. We have both paid and organic posts. We use stories and feedbooks. And we have a link tree on our Instagram page that drives users back to the city's website and other social media pages and the Stanton Express as well. And we also maintain the city's public request system. So this fiscal year, we received eighty-one public service requests. Forty-seven of those were public safety-related, eight of those were general inquiries, and twenty-five of those were public works-related. Responding to those and working with those individuals who put in those requests is a joint effort between those departments. So thank you to everyone involved in that, the team effort there.
We do want to go over park operations, specifically some members from Stanton Central Park. So we have seen a significant increase. I think this is due to post-COVID and the opening of facilities and just an eagerness to participate in activities. So from July of starting this fiscal year to April, about a hundred and five thousand visitors. And that includes our staff that do park checks. We do include our facility rentals, field users, weekend rentals. In addition, field use, we have currently eight user groups. This averages to about six hundred athletes weekly. We have it programmed every single evening and Saturdays and Sundays. And we held about a hundred and twenty-six paint week shelter rentals throughout past year as well. In addition, I'd like to highlight some recreation programs. So we have our after-school program, OST, which stands for after-school time. That is facilitated with our factory. We have an average of twenty participants daily. Our family night out event, which is fairly new and I think is our most successful new program. It's been full since the beginning. We have on average fifty participants. The budget for four a year, we were able to do an extra one with some extra funds we got from the factory this year. Teen night out, we have an average of about fifteen participants, and this one is run quarterly. Kids' night out, we operate every month, and we alternate between the FRC and Stanton Central Park. And are typically full as well with twenty participants. We are running six weeks of summer count this summer and are full with twenty participants as well. Our teen volunteer program has currently forty-three active teen volunteers, and that has come out to a total of six hundred and thirty-three hours to date. And in addition, to give access to those that may not be able to participate in our B-Base classes, we do have the Every One Place Scholarship. And currently, eighteen youth have been sponsored by this program. We have roughly four thousand four hundred and twenty-five that have been donated by the sponsors. And I do want to highlight a big component. We have a number of special events throughout the year, almost one every month. And I have coordinators here in the audience who facilitate and coordinate working with all the agencies, health permits, volunteers, decor, any special components to, you know, depending on the holiday or the need. I'm going to start with Women of Distinction, Easter Island Con's art exhibit, the Senior Resource Bar, which was just held today. We run four movies under the stars and then one additional one when we run National Night Out in partnership with law enforcement. Annually, we hold an FRC open house to talk about different programs and services to build towards the community. Halloween Festival, Veterans Day Ceremony, Christmas Tree Lighting, and Santa Siren Event, partnership with the Assistance Foundation. Additionally, we offer a number of opportunities for our seniors to come and socialize and enjoy a free meal. We have some stats here for our grabago. This was conducted previous to us getting approval to host in-person meals. So through October of last year, we served three thousand two hundred and fifty-five of those grabago meals. Our hungry program, which is the in-person meals, we did start. Our home program, which is the in-person meals, we did start after we returned in October. That's the free lunch program that we have here Monday through Thursday at 11:30. Those meals to date, we've served 1,750. And then the home-delivered meals also go out. Have never stopped actually because of COVID, so 6,720. In addition, we have daily activities and virtual classes for those participants that come to lunch and to learn, to attend workshops, and provide a number of referrals. List of just some of the options. We have our karaoke performances on Wednesday, Tuesday hula. We have different fitness classes on Wednesday, bingo group on Thursday, therapy driver safety classes, different fitness, morning and evening. And then in the summer, just the cool space together, be the heat and we provide a movie.
All right, so now to highlight our social services, which are mostly offered at the Stanton Family Resource Center. They're all offered here out of City Home now while we are undergoing some renovations. So I want to talk through all the programs and services that have come out of that building. Most of them are funded through the fact grant, but a lot of them are offered in partnership as an unfunded partner with the grants, so they are offered free to us and free to the community. So that first one is our math tutoring, which we partner with young leaders of Orange County. They come in and do free math tutoring on Fridays with participants. We also offer counseling services, so that is group counseling, individual counseling. We've been able to do 890 individual sessions of counseling this year. Typically, through the fact grant, we are only able to fund counseling at a part-time basis. But with ARPA funding, we've been able to offer a full-time counseling position, so which is why that number is so high. Additionally, with ARPA funds, we've been able to do clinical supervising for two clinical supervision, clinical interns. So we have two part-time interns who have also contributed to that number for a total number of three counselors who are facilitating those programs. We also have a personal empowerment program, and that is run in partnership with Intermodal House, and that is funded by the fact grant. We also provide case management, so all of our families who come into the FRC that need two or more of our services receive case management in which all of our partners, unfunded and funded, meet every Thursday to talk about these families and connect them to all the services that are most appropriate to get them stable and well within Orange County. We also support, we also provide family support services. So that's an individual, one-hour intake with an individual or a family one-on-one to determine how we can best meet their needs. Family support services are offered through the Running Center, and that is paid with the fact grant. We also have parenting education, which is operated in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. I forgot to mention, Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove is two facilities, our counseling programs as well. And they are funded by the fact grant. The fact grant also has allowed for us to have emergency assistance. And so we've come and received additional ARPA funding last fiscal year, of which 20,000 of that annually goes to emergency assistance. So we've had $20,000 each year since the start of this fiscal year through the end of the contract to provide emergency assistance, which can be utility payments, rental assistance. We've also done a lot of motel stays for families, gift cards for clothing and food items. It's been a huge help this year for that. We got a little bit of additional funding from fact this fiscal year, which is about 20,000, which we're using for workforce development. So we are doing job development programs through the Running Center. And that is interview prep, resume prep. They are bringing clients to job pairs, job workshops. They're purchasing gift cards for them to buy interview outfits. Really a fantastic program that we started this fiscal year and will continue through the end of the fact grant. We are also hosting developmental screenings with an unfunded partner, the Family Support Network. We posted two this year and will host one additional one, but we've served up 102 families. They're getting their preschool-age children's screens, pretty much from head to toe, vision, dental, speech development, and then they are getting kind of specialized plans to go out and give their children any help that they need based on their development. Those resources are available on-site. They are extremely well-attended and very beneficial for those young families. We also have our Community Engagement Advisory Committee. That is a fact-funded program that is run by one of our community services coordinators. They meet monthly. So this is an adult grassroots volunteer group who hosts a variety of programs within the community, but also need for leadership and development opportunities. But this year alone, we have partnered with Alzheimer's OC for a Healthy Brain Program, OCFA for disaster preparedness classes, America On Track, other FRCs and other CI groups to provide kind of extended outreach within Orange County. We've had mental health classes, a very, very well-attended diabetes informational program, and guardian forces. And then that last bullet point there is information and referral services, which is our information and referral specialist, which is also funded by fact. But these 690 individuals are pretty much anyone who comes into the FRC or gives us a phone call counts as an information and referral. So maybe somebody that we can't help onsite, we can refer out to other agencies. And that is our social services. Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. And just a quick update looking forward on our work plan. So Ashley mentioned our rebranding project and implementation, working closely with all our stakeholders, including the city council, AdHou committee, and the PIO committee. We are looking to expand our capacity in communication from PIO for an internship program. Implementation of Parks Master Plan. We have heard recent requests to bring back some senior excursions. So we're going to explore some local options through our city mobility program. We did have some previous programs that served children for ages zero and five. We are looking to raise back those partnerships off of that programming. And in conjunction with Public Works, we're on completion of a few projects, the FRC renovation, the Norma's Work Complex, Premier Park, and Stanton Park Refresh, and the Orange Oak Avenue Project. In addition, we're looking to pursue additional funds to renovate the Duck Department building and upgrades to the Stanton Central Park.
Thank you, Zanya. Thank you, Ashley. And we want to call out all of our staff who I see in the audience. So I see Doris, Daisy Kelsey, I see Jessie, I see Hannah, I see Anne, I see Wendy, Jessica. I think I called out everybody, so did I miss anyone? Thank you guys so much for coming and all you do throughout the year. And with that, we'll turn it over to Pablo Zaji.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Here to discuss some of the accomplishments and some of those we have with Public Safety. In our department, we have animal control, code enforcement, emergency preparedness, homeless services, and park control. I'm going to discuss the first few before I hand it over to Diana Valtiera, who is going to present on the homeless efforts, service, homeless outreach efforts. And then Jose Delorsori will discuss some additional efforts that have been undertaken on the public safety side. Starting with parking. So July through March of this year, we've issued 4,927 citations. Obviously, we encourage compliance and would never do anything to raise revenue, but if you are keeping score, fiscal year '21, '22, we actually exceed revenue projections by about $6,000. It's something that we do take very seriously and we do think has an impact on the community. Additionally, we towed 149 cars so far this year. That also can really impact the community if those cars go and transfer for some period of time. Animal care services, we have an excellent partner in the City Westchester Police Department. Eighty-six calls for service, 21 investigations. For a city our size to be able to contract with them and have as few issues as we have, I think really, really speaks highly of them. Their police chief takes it very seriously. And we have a very good relationship, so really pleased with that partnership. I know the folks on the financial side have done their due diligence and it is an effective, really good deal for us there. So, but they're a great partner. Emergency management also calls under us. We have really focused on updating the EOC, where's the Operations Center, from a technological standpoint. Through some grant money and other sources of the past few years, we've been able to upgrade that. Conduct training exercises. Our situation's a bit unique considering we contract for police and for fire services. Obviously, they have their own protocols from an emergency operation standpoint. So our focus is to essentially assist them on the field side. Public Works plays a huge role in that. So a lot of our preparation consists of my department through Public Safety as well, as well as Public Works. For example, going through the process during the, when we did the shock clinics for COVID, that was something that we had already, we had just trained on internally. And we're able to submit that plan to the county, which got us some of the first shock clinics in the county. So that's kind of how we choose to interface with those agencies. Obviously, the sheriffs are going to do sheriff things, and the fire corps is going to follow their protocols and they will they won't break it down. One of our main topics, topics in the entire state is addressing the issue of homelessness. And I have Diana Valtiera here to discuss what we have done on the homeless outreach side.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. We provided outreach services to homeless individuals and connected them with available resources. Collaborated with multiple service providers across the county to identify available resources best suited for each individual, such as outreach engagement with the county and volunteers, I was there, I'm sorry, volunteers. By the way. Match qualified homeless with permanent housing when available. Assisted homeless individuals to obtain documentation needed to prove benefit eligibility. Develop relationships with residents, businesses to create an open line of communication related to impacts of homeless individuals in the community. A quick success story, we recently housed an individual that was on the streets for seven years. He currently, as of Friday, April 28th, has his house, apartment at the Aces in Buena Park. So we're super excited for him. He goes by the name of Tennessee, so I know him. So that's a huge accomplishment for us. And we did get him some basic needs. We got him some toiletries, silverware, and what else can we get? And some laundry needs. So we're really excited about that.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you very much. Next up, we have Jose Delorsori. I would like to thank Diana and Maria. Been manning the ship on the side of the outreach coordinators and honestly going to be happy with her. I think we've actually taken a huge step forward. I know there was some anxiety with the departures that we had. We're in a better place than we've ever been. And as far as our project Tennessee, we've been working on closing the deal again for four years. So it's great that they were able to come in and do that. He's quite appreciative and he has been placed under direct instructions from a cranky director of public safety that he needs to be here himself for one year and then come back and speak to you at council. So we are hoping that 11 months from now, he will come and be able to present some good news for us. So now we have one of our public enforcement officers, Jose Delorsori.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Public enforcement, this year we issued 29 and 8 citations. Currently, we still have approximately $100,000 worth of citations to collect on. We inspected as far as our constant inspections that we do regularly, automotive uses, massage standing establishments, day spas, hotels, smoke shops. These other few, we do every month, two months, just to maintain the data proper operations as we've instructed through their C P's or whole agreements. And as far as street vendors is a big issue. You can see if you leave the city, there's a lot more. We've been pretty active recently. Every day at the end of our shift, we go patrol to make sure that no one's out there. If there is, we address them. In coordination with the county, we've done a few late-night operations. First night, we hit four or five places collecting about 500 pounds of product. All in the direction of the county, they issued citations. So we were more of a space on that. And it's been pretty effective on our second night we went out, we only got two people. And 800 pounds of product, and they were issued on citation. So operations are pretty good on that end. We continue monitoring all through the summer and beyond, make sure to come and bring some problems. And our daily our daily monitoring of legal activities like illegal dispensaries, illegal gambling, drinking establishments. For the most part, it's haven't been too bad in the last few years. We do have the occasional gambling issues. And a major dispensary issue right now. But now it looks like it can't keep coming to an end. As far as issues related to homelessness and the daily occurrence, we start out our mornings with the great assistance of Diana and we have done a fantastic job helping us get people moving or get them placed. The work they've done so well. And working directly with global businesses, we do outreach regularly to find out if there's issues we can help them with or to address that she's been having. Correct any legal activities or co-vouches. And also the public, we do a lot of outreach and answering calls for concerns and questions. We walk them through the issues that they need to address or if they're inclined, we walk them through our process and how to correct this problem.
Thank you, Maria. Any questions?
Are you going to go through the work plan next, too?
I'm trying to sneak out.
Nice timing.
So next year's work plan, one of the things we have met on internally and then we were at the point where we're spending a lot of time actually out in some of these locations and coming up with ideas to make this as effective as possible, is developing an effective monitoring program for the legal candidates, businesses. Right now, we're looking at all the businesses on Long Grove. We're looking at the most impactful way to address some parking situations there. Trying to get some of our home NGOs, other partners that we have, companies such as Edison, the Abby Smiths, get everybody up to speed and get off to a real good start over there with that. So it's something we want to be prepared for. Obviously, we're going to make adjustments as we go. But it's something we want to definitely be on top of before they get started. We've had introductory discussions with them and everything's been real positive to this point. So they appreciate our efforts and they know, at the same time, without being heavy-handed, they know they were interested and will be highly involved, especially at the beginning. We're creating a registry and monitoring system focusing on drinking establishments and liquor stores. So we always have obviously been in contact with some of the different bars and liquor stores as issues arise. But just as far as kind of my speech from the beginning, addressing magnets, particularly on the homeless side, we really want to dig in deep and know exactly who we're dealing with at the liquor stores. We have developed some very good contacts with ABC. They've been helping us quite a bit. And we're going to send routine inspections to the liquor stores, make sure they're handling their business the right way and that no other outside elements that Jose deals with, such as gambling. Sneak in and most importantly, work with the businesses, but also let them know that they are being monitored. And then a lot on the, as far as the drinking establishments go, just a lot of this developing contacts, if things start going sideways, have a good relationship with those folks to let them know to get back on track. And a big part of that is assisting the sheriff's department when things come up. I get a number of calls, you know, throughout the night, hey, do you have a phone number for the guy who runs? Like, you know, and that's the type of information we want to do a better job having at. Expand the city's motel inspection program. This has already begun. One of our code enforcement officers has been assigned this, Luis Ramos, examining the procedures of motel operators and identifying methods that can be used to improve appearances and limit negative impacts on the community. Our goal, considering the number of motel establishments that we have now, we want to visit every motel every two months. So similar to our inspection cycle related to other agents, other entities such as massage. We think it's really important that they are reviewed regularly related to the occupancy tax. We want people moving around in different rooms. A lot of it's going to be on the visual side, and we've actually found a lot of cooperation. Just today, we had two separate Just today, we had two separate motel operators reach out to us for assistance. So, I think that's a lot better than just kind of hoping things go okay there and have the sheriff's deal with the after effects. So, I think we're making a lot of progress there. And then continue the provision of outreach services to members of the homeless community. Obviously, this is top of mind for nearly everybody. It's a huge endeavor for us. We are adding an additional homeless outreach leader, which we're very excited about. And then being able to kind of use our unique method of the different resources we have to address this.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Jose. Thank you, Diana. So, I'm not going to tease, I put these in the order of alphabetical order, so no favorites, but the OCTA will go first for their presentation.
Good evening, the honorable Mayor, Councilperson, Staff. It's my pleasure to present to you the plan, the budget plan, work plan, and accomplishments for the Orange County Fire Authority. So, last hearing, data to responses. So, for total once in responses for the 2022 year from January to February is a total of 4,383 incidents. And then here you see the response between June and March of 3,317. That's a total of an average of 365 calls a month or a breakdown to 12 responses every single day for our units here in City's handling. We're actively involved in our community education and outreach programs. Throughout the year, we attend community events. We attend school programs, so we bring our fire engines and our community education staff to educational programs to the kids, extra drills in the home, smoke detectors, and just general home safety, fire safety programs. As well as we also conduct safety presentations. Recently, we went out to one of the local communities, the Mobile Home Parks, where we did a talk on what we did, a fire and home safety inspection to that community. And we'll always look for those opportunities that we can work with our citizens and provide that higher level of service. As well as every month, our department focuses on safety messages. A lot of times, these are generally always seasonal. So, right now, we have a really big campaign going on with the home, excuse me, home Johnny program. We just created a PSA video today, as a matter of fact, and next week, we'll see that being disseminated through social media. And as well as I said, during summertime, we'll do fireworks safety, summer heat safety. Winter time, we focus on safety around the household with candles and Christmas trees and so forth. Throughout the year, our firefighters participate and complete wide multitude of training. In general, all of our firefighters get required to complete a minimum of 20 hours of training every month. And our probationary firefighters have to do the minimum of 30 training hours a month. This has both been structured training held at our headquarters. It's also through like our battalion and the station level training. The training focuses on wide multitude of what we do. A large piece of that is all on bringing together the services, making sure we're doing our annual CE training for our entities and paramedics to keep up their licenses and CPR. And as well, we do training in general operations, dispatch command. And then we have a wide multitude of specialized training, like the technical recipe has been, ARF training, which is air rescue firefighter training, helicopter training, so. As far as incident responses, so as part of our work plan, as we want to continue to provide, Insurance Stand receives the highest level of successful and efficient home safety services. And like I said, this has built up our training model where we ensure that our firefighters are trained to the highest level capable or kept up with current standards. Right now, the biggest emphasis that we're, that we are emphasizing on our firefighters is the lithium ion battery fires and the dangers of those, as I presented earlier recently. Well, some of the other community education outreach programs, just recently, we started doing also car seat installations, sheriff's department, and been doing this for approximately probably 15 years now. They were the sole, one of the sole agencies in the county that would actually do, you know, help assist the public with car safety seat inspections. I'm proud to say that, excuse me, I'm proud to say that recently, the OCTA received training and now we have these, another additional service that we provide to our communities. And they can, community members can go to our webpage and sign up where we can set up events with the safety app. And then one of the other events that we're really proud of is our smoke alarm installation program. Throughout the year, we target high risk areas within, throughout the year, we're attending fire authority. We'll go out and we'll case, we'll canvass the area, we'll kind of basically set up a survey, see who needs smoke detectors installed at their home, and then we'll go out over four, seven, two, three, four days and install smoke detectors in homes for free. That's one of our services we provide. And as far as our work map or human resources, like all agencies, that we're also constantly constant hiring, training, recruiting, and retaining our personnel, we've aggressively have been taking some fire authority. For the past several years, we've been in what we call a staff crisis where our member retirees was outpacing our hiring. Part of this was done due to get a high rate freeze back in late 2010, 12, just due to some budget concerns. So, ever since then, we've been fast tracking academies and we've been doing on the average of two firefighter academies, two engineer academies, two cannabis academies, and two society chief academies, and promotional processes every single year for the last five years to try to get in front of this. We're also always constantly developing our career development training programs that I've already highlighted. We have a very robust peer support and critical stress briefing teams within the agency. We just recently brought on our first emotional support dog. That dog is housed at the fire station. He lives 24 hours a day with one of our firefighters. And this is another tool and resource we have to look out for the suicide prevention, mental health, and safety of our firefighters. This is all part of that of our wellness program and I'm critical of its stress briefing. And available for any questions if you have.
Thank you so much, Peter Diamond. Okay, well, that will turn it over to the Orange County Sheriff's Department, Chief Haltriss.
Good evening, Councilor, good evening. So, calls for service from July to April, there were 12,921 calls for service. That's extremely high. And the devics also observed 3,793 different violations of law. Our average response times throughout the 10 months was four minutes. That's extremely fast and that's the fastest in the county. We also closed 519 of our investigations. Community events, so we had cop to the cop, national shootout, Christmas tree lighting, the veteran memorial ceremony, and talk on block. Our special resources that we had deployed this past 10 months, you know, it's our well pilot program. The SWAT has been here, bomb squad, cannon unit, ice teams, game unit, narc units, the CNT Bureau, the Avriel Bureau, and our special investigations. The nice part of the sheriff's department is that all comes for free for the community. Our training that we've done throughout this year, we'll be, you know, the critical incidents, the system command system, the mental health, use of force, and our rest control techniques. I just heard a stat today that so far in our mental health training, our entire department, the first phase, the department's down to 98% of our staff, which is extremely high curve. And I know that the sheriff wants to get more than that on phases two and three. So, our plan for 2023, 24 is to continue to provide excellent customer service to the residents, to provide leadership and to continue to make Stanley Police Services a good place to work and really to continue that teamwork mentality. That's what we started June 22nd, June 3rd of 2022, since I got here. And that team concept is still going on today. So, and again, that's one thing I'm extremely proud about is the fact that we're able to work not just judder, but I think, you know, the different, you know, kind of the city staff, the city council, businesses, it seems like it's one team. That's the reason. To continue to build the positive work relationships with the city council, the city staff. That's something I take right by the head. I think we've made some major improvements, you know, I think the sheriff compared to last. We're only going to get better. To actively manage staffing, which was always a problem, you know, the sheriff's department, we're kind of in the Steve Ballpark where we have a lot of vacancies, you know, a lot of people retired, but we're currently actively recruiting and we're trying to fill those. The nice part about Stanley Police Services is that everybody wants to work here. I still have, I've got five on train. I have four Bluess that want to come here and I had to tell three the other day, no, because I don't have the vacancies. So, it's still a desirable place to work. To produce, you know, the regular force to the city council and the city staff. And to ensure that the Stanley Devics receive the highest level of the mental health training. They are currently getting that. Next week, we're setting our two WPs to phase three in training. So, it's going to continue. And then, so at the end of May, the inside of the police station, I'd say we're 98% there of all the updates, from carpet to flooring to paint, to murals to pictures, to flags, to, you know, getting stuff, you know, kind of bringing back some of the history. It's done. So, we're going to be kind of looking, we're going to have a city council come and see it. And then to the outside of the building, one point, you know, a federal grant that can update the outside paint, plumbing, air conditioning, gates, key card access to the whole building. So, like I said, there's a lot of great opportunity there and I think it's the collaboration and how we work together. Again, I think that station could look really, I think, really nice. And also, you know, kind of an update from the past for the next generations. That's it. Any questions?
Okay, Public Works.
All right, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, seasonary guild, their local works. Here today, we have Han Seoul, our associate engineer, is going to take us through a portion of the presentation. Public Works, we have engineering, we have facilities maintenance, we have parks, we have sewer maintenance, and also CIP. So, also, we'll start beginning and we'll.
Good evening. Look, here. My name is Han, I'm the associate engineer and I'm here to talk about the engineering portion of the Public Works and Engineering Department. So, in terms of accomplishments, the projects we have completed is the fiscal year 2021, 2022 citywide street resursing, all the arterial treats, major arterial treats that have been hit.
To add to the nerd.
City hall lighting, the pavement hall, need lighting has been installed, connecting pipe screens. So, we installed 98 cache based screens to limit stormwater pollution. Facility maintenance to the sheriff's substation, including flooring and interior painting. Demolition of 8861 Pacific Avenue, down at the Pacific location. Responding to the vehicle collisions on Orangewood and San Rosales as part of the citywide street resursing projects, we implemented a traffic warning measure in Orangewood and San Rosales. And then the Stanford Avenue's been ready to prepare. Storm drains in that shape and required immediate maintenance. To date, we have issued 210 code improvement permits and still. Currently, construction contracts awarded down to resource center renovation phase one is currently in progress and in construction. Design contracts awarded include long lost sports park, the sewer master plan, premier park renovation, pavement management plan with PMP, and ADA transition plan. Grants awarded to work with our OCTA project X and also the Calor recycle beverage container. In terms of environmental, we are in charge of the water quality management type WCP program where we work with our consultant to plan for level of stormwater runoff pollution prevention on that pavement. Working with Calor recycle and natural recycling programs. 341, which is diverting solid waste to recycling. We are at 100% compliance. AB 1826, which is regarding organic waste disposal, we're at 40% business compliance, 15% multi-capable compliance. And SB 1383, which is to reduce organic waste disposal, that's currently in progress. And we have provided organic containers to residents and multi-capable. Working with our consultant, a consultant regarding fats, oil, and beast of auto control program, we help reduce and prevent sanitary overflows to consumers. Working with the community development department, we are in charge of the grading and WCP portion. Some notable projects include Cloudhouse, Daisy and Burrell on Peach Bullhorn, Assembly and Lighthouse at the Western Hotel, Super Key on Magnolia Streetos, Sharon and Coach, also on Peach Bullhorn, Tahiti and Rivera on Peach Bullhorn as well, and also the condominiums at 11752. Our work plan is to continue the standard park adult fitness equipment project, install more cache facing screens. Install a Central Park shade structure. Family resource center renovation phase two, which includes playground and that's given. And fiscal year 22, 23, citywide resursing. We are closing five new CIP projects, which include the design of fiscal year 23, 24, street resursing, Surius Avenue resursing, upon completion and adoption of the sewer master plan, the annual sewer rehab project, and then the storm drain master plan and Stanford storm drain.
So, now with the maintenance, I want to take a little time to note, so since January of this year, we've been working with like 40% of our, 60% of our team in our field. So, I'm really happy to share that right now, even though we're short, our staff, we have 25 per day work orders, so that's great. Along with that, we have the parks, we have our streets, we have emergency calls that we do. So, we just keep pushing, right? And hopefully, we have a vacancy that is going to be built pretty soon. Hopefully, we have a new employee starting on January, so that's a great news. So, hopefully, oh, sorry, David. So, hopefully, we get back to our team and make sure we can pull with our Public Works department and stuff. Other things that we do, we have our sewer, our storm drain, and we also want to note that in here, we have 46 miles, 79 miles of a street sidewalk that we maintain with the team we have right now. We want to make sure that we continue doing that without, you know, we get our full team back in order. So, some of our work plan and maintenance here is we want to do our city hall community center lighting. We want to do our doors, age back. In parks, we have the Central Park supply pool. We have our FRC camera installation that we're doing as well. And then also, some of the commodities that we want or we have for this next fiscal year is sand, paint, hot mix, and hot mix household. So, now moving on to our CIP. So, this year, we have a total of about $3.1 million CIP. We have three projects right now on books. And as Han mentioned, one of them is our street rehab project, our annual street rehab project. So, from here, we look at our pavement management plan that is coming up. Hopefully, the next council meeting, yes, we can see that, which notes what streets need, they're recommended to do pavement rehab. So, we'll look at that plan and look into it and see what that gives us and, you know, forecast future paving projects. Along with that, we do sidewalk improvements, curb and gutters. So, we use this project to kind of look at the whole street in general to make sure we capture everything that needs to be done, that even curb ramps for ADA improvements. So we use this project to kind of look at the whole street in general to make sure we capture everything that needs to be done in that, even curb ramps for ADA improvements. So the Surius rehab, this one, we separated, it was part of our annual rehab project. However, because of the funding, we have about two hundred thousand federal funds that we're getting for. We pulled it out to create its own project, because now this project has to go through a federal funding process. Meaning you have more deadlines to meet recordings, advertisement, you have to make sure you comply with those federal grants guidelines. So we pulled it out, made its own project in the form of that. And then lastly, here we have our annual sewer rehab project, which is, as the last council meeting is approving that work for our master plan. So we're pushing through that, hopefully this summer we can complete that master plan, grant to council for adoption. And then forecast our projects that need to get done for the next six, four years. So I would like to thank our Public Works team for doing everything they can. Scott Jensen, Andy Cruz, Han Sol, Manaha, Inta, Torch, of the Dama, Salal Enya, Craig Gilbert, and Will Miller. And who takes very, very great and helping us with the Public Works department now.
Thank you, Peter. I know, we want to clap after every department goes, we're restraining ourselves up here. So before I move into decision packages, if people have any questions, we'll be moving into the next section. And I did want to read, the mayor asked me to read something, and I think this is the appropriate time to do so. He really wanted to thank, because we are highlighting all the work that you guys do every day. He really wanted to thank all of our employees for being here tonight, sharing everything that you did. And he jokingly said, especially with the Laker name on. Maybe some of you are getting updates on your phone. But the council truly does appreciate your dedication to our community and the services that you guys provide every day. And he absolutely recognizes that without each and every one of you, the council would not be a success, or our community would not be a mission to do. So thank you, guy, especially highlighting everything you did today. I think it really helps the council understand where those dollars go, but it helps, really. So with that, we're going to begin the final section of tonight's workshop, the decision packages. During this portion of the workshop, staff has prepared various decision packages with suggested funding sources for the council's consideration. These decision packages consist of requests from the council, the commissions, the community, and staff. As part of tonight's discussion, the council and community may propose additional decision packages for the council's consideration. And at the end of this discussion, staff hopes to receive clear direction on the status of each of the decision packages. So that we can include those in the final operating budget that is presented to you in June for adoption. So there are four different funding sources recommended tonight. So each of the four slides we go over, we'll focus on each funding source, so that's how they're worked. So the first funding source is ARPA money. So as you know, the council has already allocated ARPA monies through three different phases. So we've said we've gone through Phase Three. And we still have approximately two point six million dollars remaining of our ARPA monies. As a reminder, those just need to be allocated by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-four. You do have until December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six to expend them on eligible projects. So of the two point six that's available, we tonight have for you consideration of five projects totaling approximately one point five billion dollars. So I'll go through first each of them quickly, and then you can ask any additional questions that you need for verification. So first is the, in the finance department, an ERP system implementation, and integrated financial enterprise, enterprise resource planning solution. That would centralize and connect all of the departments and divisions throughout the organization. And make sure those business activities are centralized in one software system. It would connect finance with HR, revenue management, billing, asset management, and more. That three hundred thousand dollar fiscal impact you see includes first year implementation as well as Sultan Health. It's a very involved process to switch ERPs, and it really does require a dedicated person to observe the process and manage it. And we just, in terms of our internal resources, don't have the capacity to address that project with our existing resources. Number two, public safety. This is continuation of the pilot program. The two deputies that the council most recently approved just a few months ago, so you're very familiar with this project. It's been working well, you've heard from our staff, both our homeless outreach coordinator and code enforcement, how well that partnership is working. And because there are some new impacts coming into the city, opening of three project home keys, opening of cannabis commercial businesses. And we obviously are continuing to be challenged by some of the activities of our neighboring cities as well. So we would love the opportunity to continue that project through the next fiscal year. Number three, Stanford, in Public Works, Stanford Avenue storm drain repairs, so Caesar touched on that. We did, when preparing Stanford for work to come in, we did recognize that there was some unanticipated damage to the storm drains. We have received, but on the actually went above and beyond what their requirements were, did some additional repair work. That really benefited the city, but there is a portion that we fully are responsible for. We would like to take care of that now, while the street is accessible and before it is fully populating. Number four, Public Works, temporary part-time assistant city engineer. This is really related to the Norma Ross Sports Park project. So this is, I don't know if maybe prior, Public Works departments have worked with school districts to deliver a project. But it's a whole nother level of complexity, because it's a school district project. And because of the possibility, as remote as it may be, that one day that park would revert to the school district for ownership. And so we have to go through a whole different level of scrutiny, inspection, coordination with the state. And so again, just based on the existing resources in our engineering department, we don't have the capacity to give that the attention it really deserves. And so if you look at normal CIP projects, there's always a project management budget. We've been very frugal at the city, and we try and do as much of that in-house as we can, but this is really one time. Or we don't want to misstep, it would jeopardize the project. And because it's being federally funded, and we wouldn't want to risk that within the timeline that we have. I'm sorry, statement. Number five, Public Works storm drain master plan. We have lots of plans in the city that have not been updated in this timeframe than they should be, just because of funding. And so definitely having these ARPA funds is very helpful, because normally we would recommend that with surplus, you start building a reserve. Or something like this, from a great master plan, where you start putting money away every year. It is, I believe, over twenty years old, and we really do need to get an update that we would be coordinating as we put the other agencies that had data already. For surveys that could help us, but it's approximately six hundred thousand dollars. So those are the five projects that are recommended for council's consideration to be funded with these one-time ARPA money. And now staff is available to answer any questions you may have about the projects. Or you can make a motion to recommend approval of the projects as proposed.
Question, the ERP system implementation, I know that three hundred thousand is the first year, plus the support. Do we have any chance to know about the ongoing costs? It'll be less than what we currently pay, pay looks free for?
I doubt it'll be less. It would vary, because depending on what modules and what system we ultimately go for, I would guess, conservative, I would guess it's going to be about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
And in context, we currently pay for our finance system modules, plus the twenty-four thousand, or you pay for our budgeting module. Which we hope that the new system would incorporate budgeting. We pay about eighty thousand dollars. On the system that was originally purchased in two thousand and six. And it's been increasing by CPI since then.
Okay, I'm sorry, just to add, the mayor wanted to, as we take advantage of technology and utilize software and systems behind this, there's cost, intangible cost savings that we capture with employee time and energy being able to be focused on other projects. When I was presenting this during the two-two ones, I remember there was Stanton Park refresh, that I think was a few hundred thousand dollars. And I, just looking at it, I noticed that was taken out of the subsequent slides. Is there any way we can put this into the ARPA decision packets that we can, since we're renovating Norma Ross, so we may as well renovate Stanford, so it looks like a city project?
So two things, I, I think there may be some projects that I'm concerned we may need more funding to complete. So I would like to save some of the ARPA monies, because I think we'll know in six months. It is accounting funded ARPA projects, the H Jack and the Emergency Generator. I just want to make sure that we're able to complete those, so I was hoping to save some of the ARPA monies. As we were discussing the costs related to this Stanton Park refresh, we got some updated information from SDE. That they are not, they are not comfortable with we were proposing to spike the adult fitness equipment. They actually wanted to move to where, closer to where our playground structure is. So after receiving that feedback, and again, they're withholding their approval, so that's withholding our whole process. Zenia, Caesar, and I sat down and talked about, well, maybe then it makes sense to, because we're, you know, we're going to have a playground over by Norma Ross. We know we're going to have other facilities, so maybe it makes sense to remove the playground, shift the adult fitness equipment over. To where SDE would give their approval, which would preclude us from then being able to use that space, if the fitness equipment would be there. And then the four hundred and ten thousand dollars that the council already approved in Phase Three ARPA allocations. Could then be used to remove the playground, do the demolition work, maybe put in some additional monies towards establishing the fitness park pad and the fitness park equipment. So yes, we did remove it, and it happened to work with the most recent update that we got from SDE. Now, that's always something we can bring back to the council. I think we do need to pursue this avenue with SDE, because we absolutely need that approval quickly, because it's holding up everything.
If we're going to be removing a playground at Stanton Park, can we hold off on that until Norma Ross has its playground public and functional?
I don't know timing wise of how that will work.
Yeah, we would have, we would get, look at that, we definitely look into the schedule, because like I said, when we get more into the construction of Norma Ross, we can have a better timeline as we move forward. So I'll hopefully take into consideration and make sure we work with that schedule.
And as long as the council, then, I don't know the funding source for the standard, the adult fitness equipment, because then we wouldn't be able to install that. So I just, we can look at it behind it.
Because what you end up doing is you prevent Stanton Park from, or you prevent kids from being able to enjoy Stanton Park. In exchange, you allow adults to have that, you know, remedy. So it seems like a trade-off, that may not be beneficial if there's something. So I just want to make sure we time it right, so that no group suffers or not. Not for each one, but if we want to see the other package, all right, the project.
There is the ARPA package, items one through five, it was motion by council member Taylor, a second by council member Torres, all in favor? Any in votes? Here I am. I didn't absorb it.
The next slide will focus on decision packages that would be funded through Park and Louvies. As a reminder, Park and Louvies coming from developer, developer, development projects that are in town. And there is a requirement to provide additional recreation facilities and resources. So there's four projects on this slide, again, I'll look at them quickly, while we can answer any additional questions. Really, what we did when we were looking at these potential projects was, we were looking at what the council has already. And you all know, because we've already come back to you for amendments to other contracts, that these projects, the grant funds, the design, they were done one, two, three years ago. And since that time, we've seen significant cost increases, both in professional services related to design, and as well as materials and actual construction services. So we focused on the projects the council had already approved. And working with Public Works and Community Services, and the real-time estimate that they're getting for what their project design and scope is supposed to be. We've added monies to make sure that we can complete the project as the council originally envisioned, without having to cut from the scope of service. So none of these are new projects, again, these are just to deliver the existing commitments at the quality we believe the council intended. So we did have approximately three point one million dollars currently. Now, this is a fluctuating balance, because as more developers come into town, as more projects hit new milestones, more monies will be coming into this. But as of the development of this budget, there's three point one million. You can see we draw almost all of that down across the four existing projects. So that's Norma Ross, Premier Park, FRC Phase Two, and Stanton Fitness Equipment. Yes, and then we do know that the Park and Louvies fund will continue to grow. And so we will have, that will get replenished as more projects come in, so that it will be able to be used for other projects as well.
I'll make a motion, but that's, that was your, you know, I saw some of those were more funding in the tennis courts.
So we're currently pursuing grant funding for the tennis court. So the tennis court project, as scoped out by the Parks and Art Commissioner, who is most passionate about that, would be about four hundred thousand dollars. And so we are submitting a grant request for those funds. So we'll see if we get the funds, of course, you would love to be able to renovate those tennis courts, and if not, that's a council decision. If you would, you know, clearly there's enough money here, if we bump from one of the other existing projects, you could be able to sign that. The mayor also just wanted to clarify that we can adjust these amounts before, you know, the project is final, the design process is final. So there is still, it's not, just because you made a decision tonight doesn't mean it's locked in, and we may return with cost savings, you know, depending on how the project breaks out.
I did want to mention again that we should not be installing adult park fitness equipment, if that means we have to remove the playground, without having an appropriate playground available for kids to use.
Vice Mayor, I'm assuming though, however, if we were restricted by deadlines that are outside of our control, I mean, we would come back and notify the council. But to not lose those funds, I know it's not ideal, but it would be acceptable if we had to. We've already paid for the equipment.
Habitat, we have it with, we have it with, we have it with, since the fall of twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. The National Fitness Campaign's already given us the money for it, so it's been sitting in our yard. If ever wanted to inspect it, they might wonder why it's still sitting in our yard.
So there's no other place that could be go besides where the existing playground is?
We can, so we're working with SDE right now, so we can, I can, you know, we know, I can look at other locations. And see possibly we can relocate adjacent to there, so we have, I mean, it's a wide range of partners. So I think we could look into a different location, and, you know, an option we have for that, so we can definitely do that.
Pardon, I can't, I motioned now. We have a motion by Mayor Potemban, a second by Councilmember Taylor, all in favor?
All right.
Any in votes?
And the mayor just wanted to acknowledge, you know, we do have a lot of amenities and resources for kids, and we do want to make sure we provide to all demographics. Okay, the next slide, we have decision packages that are seeking alternative funding. So some of these, actually, we have funding for, we just need the council's approval to proceed. And some of them, like the tennis court program, we are seeking funding for. So number one is community development, home repair improvement grant. And so we are aware that during COVID, the council had a $50,000 to be set aside to fund these low-income home repair improvement grants. I understand that a consultant was hired to help administer the program. So in talking to the new president of Habitat for Humanity, she shared that there are funds that they can make available for the same purpose. So if the council's interested, staff would go back and pursue that. If for some reason we have more interest than they have funding available, the council may also ask staff to go get CDDG existing funds that we do have, that we could allocate or back as well. So we could, we would start with the money we can get from, for free, from Habitat for Humanity, see what the interest was in the community. Number two is community services, Stanton Central Park lighting. So again, this is a grant we have already been awarded, it's the EDCBG grant. And I don't think the money is in hand yet, but we've been given a letter that it's coming in the amount of seventy-six thousand dollars. So it's a good amount, but it's not enough to do a huge project. But we know that the community, the commission, the council has been very interested in increasing lighting at Central Park. And so we think this would be a perfect opportunity to use those grant funds. So again, that money is already here, we just need the council to reply on that. Number three, community services, this is the tennis court renovation. So again, Zenia is working with council and Public Affairs to submit our application under the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant Opportunity, in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Number four, block cameras, so the city currently has thirty-eight block cameras. And Public Safety Director and Chief of Police and I sat down and looked at what that currently looks like. We came to realize that we have thirty-eight cameras, and our neighboring cities have a fraction of what we have. Seal Beach has one, Oneapark has four, Westminster has five, La Opera has eight. Plus that, and now we're getting kind of more from us. So we were wondering- So we were wondering what, why the discrepancy? Why do we have 38 and we're paying $123,000 for those? And why do these other cities have so few? So we really tried to understand part of what the original intent was and given the technology that was available and some of the challenges the city was facing at that time, understanding where the staff recommendation came from and then looking at where we are today and what other technology we have to support those efforts, what other resources we have. And, and relying also on the electronic gate or fences, you want to refer to it, that our neighboring cities have. It's amazing because as we were looking at this, Chief Walters shared with me that one of our deputies won the award throughout Orange County for the most stolen vehicles recovered. And so he and I talked about, okay, are we going to kind of take this resource away from him? When he, he said, no. He said that deputy is, there is definitely a benefit to block, but it's not doing the work that our deputies are doing. So our recommendation after looking at the locations we had, so the block cameras are angled in a way that we had cameras in some locations where one camera was anchored on one lane of traffic. So we had like four to six in that area. We think we can, we think we can still be successful with a reduced number. So staff recommendation is to reduce those 38 cameras to 14. We've identified the locations we would want to leave them and we would just remove the others. That would result in a change in cost from $123,000, which is actually this year's cost, but the cameras are going, the price for each camera is going up by 20%. And so there's actually going to be a $20,000 to $30,000 price increase to the $123,000. So that would be reduced to $34,000. And we want to see how it works this year. And if we decide, wow, taking out those cameras really made a difference, we can, Block is more than happy to come back and reinstall them at any point. But we'd like to try that. And what that also does is the funding source for these block cameras have been part of our state cops grant reserve. So historically, we had a little reserve pot and finance was using those monies to pay the $123,000. The new state cops grant monies that were coming in, finance has been using to smooth the increases to the Orange County Sheriff's Department contract. So that's helped us support those increases. So that reserve pot that we've been using to fund the block cameras will run out in less than two years at this new increase rate. And then you will have to start funding that out of the general fund and you will no longer have that offsetting amount. Or if you use the cops grant monies, you will no longer have that offsetting amount to address increases to the Sheriff's Department contract. So that's why we're recommending that. We don't believe there will be a significant impact to our success in recovering stolen vehicles and we do need to modify the huge cost savings that will allow us to put that money back towards public safety. Number five is Public Safety C I P. This is the police station update. So we put in a federal fair market request and that's for $1.8 million. As Chief Walters mentioned, we've done a lot of renovation work inside the building, but there's a lot that needs to be done outside. The roof, the electric panel, plumbing, all of that needs to be done. And so we're requesting some assistance. That does come with a $200,000 batch of work. So the total project will be a $2 million project. And finally, on this slide is a citywide speed study update under Public Works. We already have monies in our gas tax fund that we can use to fund this. It's $30,000 and this is strongly recommended to be approved without the current valid citywide speed study update. I, I'll tape and do this out loud. All of the motor citations that we write can be challenged and court and the challenge will be, will win because you have to have a current up to date citywide speed study update. So again, we have funding for that and we just need to rely on the council to allocate it to that project. Any question on the funding, any community line? Yes, and the mayor wanted to bring up in the future, we should consider buying our own.
So on the Stanton Central Park Tennis Court, that is totally contingent that we get the grant.
That's correct.
So if we're approving this, we're just approving that time to try to obtain the grant.
Correct. And that's the same case for another five as well.
How long does it take to find out whether we get the grant re applied?
Five, we've been getting updates. So we know it made it through the first hurdle. I think we would know at the end of the summer. But we, Zania, do you happen to know what the estimate is? Sorry, the, the return notice isn't, no, it isn't out, but we're preparing the, okay, but it is due June 1st. So I would anticipate sometime in the fall.
So if we don't end up getting the grant, I guess by fall, we can always have that mid-year budget and decide once reality before that project. Is that right?
I'm sorry, can you?
Oh, I'm saying that if by fall, we find out that we don't have, we couldn't acquire that grant, we can always relook at the mid-year budget when it comes around to possibly allocate money.
Yes, and, and don't forget, actually, the next budget check people have is that you're enclosed for fiscal year 22, 23, and that will should come probably November, December timeframe. And there may be, if there is a surplus, that's again, where you would want to allocate that to one time project. So that will come before your next mid-year will come, early spring.
For this citywide speed study, do we have any information on how many of our speed tickets work right now? Because people requested that we know up to here.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's currently up, it's currently good through the end of the summer. We're good, nobody, right? So we just want to anticipate, making sure we have a new one before the current one runs out this summer.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. For all kinds of funding, we have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, a second by Mayor Putnam Ban, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? During that?
Thank you. Okay, so this is the last and final slide for decision packages. These are all recommended to be funded from that general fund surplus that Michelle highlighted at the very beginning of the presentation, which was approximately $840,000. So once again, I'll go through it quickly and then we can answer any additional questions. So one of the issues that staff has recommended we look at because it has been a long time since we've looked at the city council stipend and we understand that having a stipend that's comparable to others in our local area allows for more participation. So we are recommending the council look at that stipend. We have various amounts that the council can consider increasing by, and I apologize, I thought I had the data on this slide. So the council can increase that 5%, which means we want to do that. Just a minute. Mayor has an excellent memory. I just want to pull up the one that actually gives me the dollar numbers, the dollar. All right, so I apologize that I can't explain this. So the city council stipend, I did send this to the council as part of this reporting information. So you may recall seeing this chart. We looked at various cities throughout Orange County. We looked at Huntington Beach, Anaheim, Wanda Park, Stanton, and Costa Bays, and Westminster, Cypress, Porche, and Freya, Orange, Seal Beach, Fountain Valley, La Habra, Torvaldo, Salavita, La Palma, Garden Grove, Placencia, and Villa Park to basically do a compensation study survey for council stipends as well. And we looked at the monthly stipends, retirement packages, health, life insurance, auto allowance, cell phone, cell phone allowance, and cash allowance. The monthly stipends ranged from none at Villa Park, that was the only council that did not receive a stipend, all the way up to just under $1,700 per month at Huntington Beach. The City of Stanton's monthly stipend is $850 and in terms of just the stipend, fell above the median for the group. Retirement packages ranged from none at Placencia and Villa Park. Many competitor cities utilize pars as we do and many cities also use Calverts. In terms of health insurance, about half the city surveyed do not offer any health insurance, which is similar to what Stanton does. Other cities use what they offer to employees. For life insurance, the majority of cities do not offer any life insurance. But next to council members, there were five cities, four cities that offered in the range of $10, $20,000 to $50,000. In terms of auto allowance, the majority of cities do not include an auto allowance. There are five cities who offered an auto allowance to council members ranging from $100 to $650 a month. Cell phone allowance, only one city out of all of the cities surveyed offered a cell phone allowance and that's Bottom Park. And the cash allowance, only one city out of all of the cities surveyed offered a cash allowance and that is the City of Cypress. So the last increase to the council stipend was in January of 2009. And so law allows that any stipend since then is calculated basically 5% per year. So it's been 15 years. So as the mayor pointed out, council could increase the stipend up to 75%. So depending on the council's interest, we would recommend setting that direction with staff now. I want to clarify that also based on California government code, any stipend this council votes on and directs staff does not take effect until the next election. And so this would not take effect until January of 2025. So again, right now, the Stanton stipend is $850 and it's about $40 per 5% increase. So a 5% increase would be 892.15. A 10% increase would be $935. A 15% increase would be $977. A 20% increase would be $1,020. I can go up if you're interested in any amount between 5 and 75. I have all of those calculated. It doesn't have to be an increment of five. That's just what is allowed per year. So council can direct, after I go through the other list of things, can think about it and directly, that's what I'm really going to have more information to speak right now.
I think I have a comment. As I mentioned, when we saw that chart before, Garden Grove has recently raised their council salaries. I want to adjust this.
Yes, we did adjust this. This is the latest, the 1312, the Garden Grove's updated. You can track that. You emailed that. It was part of, it was, it was a screenshot. Oh, I, yeah, I did.
Okay. She had the old one up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I did, I did update that.
So I'll go back and finish going through the rest of the decision packages and then we can come back to anything that the council would like to discuss further. Number two is related to the city council stipends related to travel, I'm sorry, not stipend, budgets related to travel, conference. As you know, for the first time this year, we exceeded the budget for council travel. So staff put together for your consideration if you'd like to increase that budget or like we did this year, we'll just notify you when we exceed it and see if you're comfortable. Number three is related to human resources and a cost of living allowance increase for employees. So as I mentioned earlier, as part of the human resources accomplishments, we did conduct a compensation study looking at our neighboring cities. And what we're looking for is where could an employee reasonably commute to work? That's who are competitive, are competitive. And then you take the job titles and you compare where, what their salary ranges are and where we fall in the market. So based on the, we looked at also CPI and I also sent you guys the background slide. So we looked, starting back at 2009, and we looked at how CPI has changed and we used the CPI for the all urban consumer Los Angeles, Long Beach, Anaheim. So that's changed approximately 36% since 2009. And the Stanton employee pool was over that time have, are equaling about six, just under 17%. So the delta there is what we're trying to address. We want to make sure we stay competitive in our market. Based on the existing revenue and expenditure projections, staff is recommending a cost of living allowance increase of 4%. That is not out of line in terms of what other cities are doing. We know, we surveyed Anaheim, Fountain Valley, Garden Grove, Irvine, I R W, De La Palma, Luna Beach, Mesa Water, New York, and plenty of cities in Long Island, Toronto, and Boston. Most of them have multi-year contracts and they range in guarantees anywhere from a low of 1% at San Clemente to a high of 5% at Mesa Water. Most of them are 3% or 4%. So some of these agencies may have done a better job than we have over the years of keeping pace with CPI and that may be why they, they're, they're a little bit lower than what's recommended. But again, we're trying to address that delta of 16% over the last few years and trying to make sure our employees pay as competitive as possible. Number four, this is also human resources. So one of the things we look at when we do a compensation study is if we have a classification that's very outside of the norm for the market. What I'm looking at is if an employee leaves, how hard would it be for us to recruit for that position given the pay scale? So we did identify three classifications that need to be adjusted to be able to put us, to make sure that we remain competitive in terms of recruitment and retention. And we're also including in this line item request, one part-time H R analyst. So I mentioned that we have an I T department of one and an H R department of one. The I T department of one, we're addressing by bringing in an enhanced I T contract provider. And we would like to address the H R department of one by providing additional part-time support. Number five is related to enhancing the I T support. So we currently pay our contractor $40,000 per year, which basically we get what we pay for, which isn't a whole lot. So when we issued the R F P, we did let them know that the proposed annual expenditure would be approximately $150,000. And we came up with that number looking at others that used, who had recently issued R F Ps for approximately the same size in terms of employees and in terms of services they were supporting. So we are still on the very low end of that and we still have 18 proposals. So we're looking, we'll be looking very closely at those cost proposals to make sure they didn't give us the bare bones. Later on after the fact, we'll be tacking on things. We'll manage to our budget. Number six, strategic plan update goal setting. So this is something I heard from a couple council members. So we have reviewed the strategic plan in 2013, 2015, 2019 was recently, and it was supposed to be a two-year plan. So technically, it's outdated, but you did look at it in 2019. But the strategic plan objectives, I think, all I knew, wouldn't change that much. Maybe some of the tactics that you would want us to pursue to implement those. So we can, we can do this however the council is most comfortable. Most cities will hire a facilitator to lead the council through the process. And I surveyed cities who had done that recently to try and get a figure of that they thought would be reasonable. So that's how we came up with $15,000. Number seven is participation with the North Orange County Chamber of Commerce. So last year, they changed their membership model and they now require you to pay upfront each year $5,000. So staff reading when they ask them, hey, how many of our Stanton businesses are actually members? Not a lot. We asked them, so what do you do to support our Stanton businesses? Not a lot. So, but they have been making a consistent push. So I did tell them, I will bring this to the council as part of the budget workshop. Number eight, this is a new one that the council did not see. So we have one vendor who helps us maintain our splash pads, both at Central Park and Duxton Park. I will say we have not been satisfied with the quality of services provided by the vendor. We did go out to R F P and they were the only ones who responded. So they did go through recently and try and get both splash pads ready for our Memorial Day opening. Central Park is fine. Everything will be ready, we'll be able to open it. Significant repairs need to be made at Duxton Park. And they do a closeout at the end of each season also, and they didn't identify it. So I don't know if something happened between the closeout and the reopening or if they missed it during the closeout, but whatever, it's not ready to be opened. They need parts that need to be ordered. They said those aren't readily available, so that will take time. And they warned us, this is probably not all that you're going to have to pay to get this functional. This is, like, we can't even get it running to see what else might not be working. So their quote that they provided to Public Works is actually $27,000. I padded that at 40 because I'm just anticipating that there will be other repairs and if not initially, definitely through the summer season. And if not initially, definitely through the summer season. So that's for council's consideration. And we just found out about this after I had had our 221. Number nine, community services events. So throughout the year, we've been collecting feedback from the community, the Parks and Rec Commission, what we've gone to talk on the blocks, what we've heard from the council and the dais. So these are, oh, I'm sorry. These are various activities that we've heard over the year, or over the year for new programming over through community services. So looking at the existing events that we provide, we came up with a ballpark number in terms of staffing, supplies. And so it's about $6,000 per event. And of course, if the council feels like that's too much, but you still want to offer these events, you can adjust that budget and we'll do the best we can on the budget you provide to us. I know the mayor has also talked about, you know, offering sponsorship opportunities to other companies or groups that would want to work with us, or even maybe letting another community-based organization run one as a fundraiser, like the Taste of Stanton or something. So that's for council's consideration and discussions. Number 10 and 11 are both requests directly from the Parks and Recreation Commission. So our director of community services earlier this year, as staff was going through behind the scenes building our budgets, she did the same with them. She told them, hey, the budget workshop is coming up. This is your opportunity to put forth your requests for the council's consideration. So as you know, they put forward the tennis court renovation, a Love Our Cities service state project, which would include five different projects, and the decoration of the utility art boxes. So I know I've also heard from the council that, hey, we don't need to necessarily pay somebody else. We could just pay for paint and we can have a community-based organization or an Eagle Scout or another volunteer group come do that. So there could be some cost savings there as well. Number 12, parking structure restructuring. So we know this is something that we've heard from the council. After this came and was put on this list, actually Vice Mayor connected with, that's with a student who was very eager to do this project, was very excited about doing this project. So we're connecting him with community services, Public Works. Our Public Works managers, Scott Jensen, gave the green light that he would be happy to do some minimal instructing and supervising so that the student could do this project. So I think that could be significantly reduced. I think the paint costs were estimated to be $1,500 to $2,000. Another new one that we added after the council had seen this during their 221s is the Catherine Street sidewalk completion. I believe on the dais, you have an email from not actually the owner of the home, but a positive street neighbor who's frustrated by seeing the gap every day. So we don't know why this happened or how this happened. We inherited this. So during development of that tract, the sidewalk ended in front of that house. So there is one house that does not have connected sidewalk. So obviously, there's issues with that for accessibility and safety. We would like to complete that sidewalk, and the estimate for that project is $30,000.
We have two great communications provided to council and then just for the record, in favor of hopefully moving forward with this.
So these were the decision packages, again, that we've collected over the year from varying sources. There's obviously many other projects that we could list on here. And we tried to prioritize the ones that we thought were most important this year. It does leave you a remaining balance from the surplus. So you see that first one, the approximate surplus balance is $840,000. Now with the reshuffling of some of these projects, the removal of the Stanton park refreshment, the addition of the new projects, the total request is approximately $530,000, which would leave a remaining balance in the surplus of $310. So you can discuss these 13 before you, and then the additional $310, there's a number of things you can do. You can request amendments from the dais for staff to add to our list. You can request that we put that into a reserve. There's various reserves. Staff will be happy to recommend such as facilities maintenance, park maintenance, park playground replacement. So there's lots of reserves we can find, things that don't exist right now. Or you could use it for something else that you've been thinking of and would like your colleagues to consider. So I'm happy to answer any questions, provide additional information as well as we go through these. Let me know if you want to go through just one through 13 numerical since these are a little unique compared to the other decision packages or how you would like to proceed.
My personal opinion on keeping the North Orange County Chamber of Commerce, I don't see any benefit of having a membership for that. I would much rather put that money somewhere else.
So maybe, City Clerk, why don't we take? I mean, why don't we take a motion on each of the ones? Because they're so unique. So Carol, Councilmember Warren, are you making a motion to not fund number seven?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so I'm being recommended to pause and see if there's any public comment on any of these agenda items. Any members of the public who would like to speak on any of these items? Same now, I'll get back to the council. So I heard a motion by Councilmember Warren, second by Councilmember Taylor, to remove item number seven, participation in the North Orange County Chamber of Commerce for $5,000.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? During that, we will review item seven. For item two, it states that currently we expended $11,000 just as this year in power.
No, I apologize. So what we've included in the proposed operating budget is the same amount as last year, which is $11,000. And then we added the $4,000, which would have been due not.
Yes.
Got it. Okay. Is now appropriate time to suggest other things, or should we wait till? You can suggest it because it may alter how your colleagues vote on these.
One thing I had mentioned in our, I guess, pre-budget meeting during the 221s, was I felt like there is a need for us to have a Vietnamese community liaison. And the reason is because as we believe Vietnamese or Asian-American on council, I am constantly being approached and reached out to by our Vietnamese constituents, asking for services, needing help, translation, things like that. And do you know if there's anyone who's fluent in Vietnamese right now at City Clerk?
So your request caused us to go back and look at our bilingual pay. And we're actually going to revisit how we certify everyone. So we have put out a call to all employees to be recertified. We are actually doing it in-house. So we're going to use a third-party certification company. And so right now, we are, it's open to employees. I will tell you on the list that we had, there were no Vietnamese speakers that were receiving the pay. I do know we have Vietnamese speakers who read and interact with guests at the counter, but they had not put in for certification. So they will be able to tell you after we go through all the certifications, if anybody requests to certify that they have.
In my limited experience speaking with some of our cities at, I didn't find anyone who was native to Vietnamese to be able to help a lot of our constituents who need that help. And I spent so many hours working with constituents or businesses or residents who need help. And it's really, I think it's unfair if we have such a huge portion of our community who is unable to be served. And frankly, my time is limited on this dais, and so I won't be serving in my capacity. And I want to make sure for, you know, a long time. So I want to make sure that when I am no longer serving as a council member, that this community is not neglected and still receives services that are very essential. And so I am hoping that the council will consider us to have a Vietnamese key liaison. And I know Santa Ana had one, Orange County has one. A lot of cities with high Asian-American politicians do have one. And what they do is they serve as a way to connect resources to folks who are most vulnerable and underserved, and especially folks who have that language barrier, would otherwise not be able to get those services. I'm very proud to say that our city has an amazing amount of Spanish-speaking staff. And they do a great job with outreach. You can see it in CAC with a lot of Spanish-speaking numbers. However, I think that for the Vietnamese side, there are things a lot to be desired. And I think when we talked about this, I believe that if we get someone part-time, it would be about $30,000. I think that's well within the amount of money we have available, so I believe that we'll consider it. And, you know, try it for years, you know, it goes, and then consider when we want to continue that after the following years.
And just to add on, Chief Walters and Cheryl, the mayor office specialist for red station is native to Vietnamese. So we do have that resource.
I also think we ought to review the website and our materials because that will help. Even if we have a liaison or we don't, that if somebody is Vietnamese, that they get their material.
So I heard a motion to recommend funding a part-time employee slash, it would definitely be part-time. I think that the mayor's concern is that we would be on the hook for benefits with a. Okay, so the mayor, okay, so I think the mayor wants to make an amendment that it would be a contractor, not a part-time employee.
Shouldn't we wait to see if we have any money?
No, I'm talking about contracting.
In my personal experience, we used to have someone named Tom Nguyen, who was in the finance department. He was very fluent in Vietnamese. But since he left, I have not encountered anyone who's made it. And that's why a lot of residents reach out to me, because they can't mind anyone at City Hall if they help them, at the level that they.
And if we didn't allocate this position anytime, that's all for. Should we bring this back and up to council maybe?
Well, for Michelle and I to close the budget, so if we, if we adopt it and you allocate all the surplus funds, then we're not able to deliver you a balanced budget, which is okay, but I personally don't like that. I want to deliver you a balanced budget. So what we could do is raise, yes, what we could do is reserve some funds. We won't take any action on it until we see the results of the employee certification survey. We could come back to the council, let you know the results, and then let you know how we want to proceed. And then if we don't even want to exceed about $30,000, you can reprogram it at that time, but we reserve it just in case.
I will make a motion to a specific.
All in favor of the motion that was. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not, Councilmember Warren. We have a motion by Councilmember Taylor and a second by Councilmember George. We have an all-in-favor vote and very no opposition. Does that seem clear, Mr. Mayor? All in favor and no opposition? One other thing I'd love for us to add as a possible item is, I know that for the past year, we've been having our meetings through Zoom for the public. We've been, I guess, allowing the public to participate remotely via Zoom. However, I've gotten feedback from several members of the public saying that the quality of the audio and the visuals is very poor. They can't really see anything. Whatever their presentation, they can't see it either. And when we last spoke about this, PCTA would be able to provide, I guess, recordings and live streaming and all that of our meetings as part of the PCTA package that we already pay use in our taxis. We just had an investment in infrastructure needed to have improvements such as cameras and, I guess, audio equipment and, I guess, electric. And I believe when we last looked at this, it was about $100,000. It might be more now, I don't know. But I'd like for us to consider investing in improving transparency, accountability, and the ability for civic engagement by having the cameras or whatever is needed for people to have our meetings recorded and available to the public in a way that is, that is higher quality than it is now. So that person can watch and be able to participate when we.
So just a reminder of the context of how we got here. So the council had this discussion prior. The council consensus at the time was there was a mixed feeling about whether some of the council members were supportive of such a large investment in the infrastructure. That's when the council approved a pilot program because they wanted to see basically return on investment. If we spend $150,000 on infrastructure, then are we supporting more people watching, right? And so that's why the council directed staff to conduct a pilot program through November of 2023 and then report back to you on each meeting how many people were participating. So just to provide context from where we are today, the mayor also wrote that the PCTA is meeting tomorrow. And getting a better understanding of what they could provide could be discussed.
I guess what I'm saying is it's a chicken and egg issue because you don't know if people are not watching because when they log on, it's so difficult to follow because of, you know, that audio, the visual's not great. Or if, you know, there's actually no interest. And that's why I feel like the data that we'll get in November may be not telling of what, if there's actual interest. And regardless, I feel like most cities in California, I mean, in Orange County, have much better recordings that their council meetings available to the public than we do, almost. So I think it's up, it's time that our city considers being more, you know, investing in this transparency, allowing more accountability, and just put the standard that we expect now of our government agencies.
I will, I will mention that as I was on Zoom, when I was sitting, I zoomed into the meetings. I couldn't hear anything on the dais. I couldn't see anything. I had a lot of trouble hearing when you guys were talking. It was not very, not pretty efficient and not very useful in that sense.
I got that feedback from all of us.
So the mayor, I'm sorry, I'm trying to make sure that he gets the voice too. So he noticed that there's not, City Clerk, can you talk to me, can you draw a line there, is that?
Apparently, we have none.
So he, yeah, he asked for that, I guess, for that. He wanted to, he is recommending we keep the pilot programs for November and gather the data as originally directed by council.
Oh, no, the only thing I was going to make is even though we would get our equipment through PCTA, obviously, we would have to get the infrastructure. There has to be people that know how to run it and operate. So that would be our cost.
We were told when PCTA came here and gave up the presentation that it was included in our taxis. They provide that service free of cost, or included in the cost that Western State was talking about.
That's because Westchester and Fountain Valley have a lot larger amount of money than the PCTAs in Stanton. So that would actually be something that would have to be approached.
So November's not that far away. We should call the lady, see how that.
She is going to be missing a meeting, I mean.
So right now, I feel like the data is really good for me to arrive to some council meetings. It's like Zoom, when most of all other cities have things through YouTube, they stream it live. So I feel like reducing those barriers would bear more accurate data. But if you just have one meeting available for everybody, I feel like then you'll see lower numbers. So if we want to gather the best amount of data, we need to expand our.
I mean, Simon meeting, he always think, like he said, we logged in through Zoom, couldn't hear anything. And that was just so inaccessible. And I think that was, I guess, starting from that thing, yeah, that's right.
I have a comment. The thing I'm sorry to see that's not included in this is anything that pushes the city environmentally forward. There's no LED lighting for city halls that we need. You know, there, we could, solar panels on top of the parking structure. These are things that have a high upfront cost, but then they reduce our cost by 50%. So in the long run, there are money-saving things for the city to do when the city can bear the upfront cost.
We can certainly add that. One thing I also wanted to piggyback on, Councilmember Carol Warren. I completely agree with you. I think we need to make better investments, especially environmentally. One thing I had talked about in previous budget meetings is having a green forest program. I feel like there was a report by the grand jury stating that Stanton is one of the most tree-poor cities per capita. And I think that if there's any way we can increase our trees in our city, I know we have a tree-giving program, but I speak to residents. we have all this tree giving program, but I speak to residents about it, they don't, they don't want the tree because, first of all, the tree, they don't, they don't get to choose what tree it is, and they wanted a specific tree, such as a fruit tree or whatever. And I think the upfront maintenance costs for that, they, they weren't plotted on the idea of watering it, especially their venture to maintain it for the first few years it was established. So if there was any way we could consider, you know, adding more trees to our city parks, I know all of that is pretty sunny, and if there's any way we can add more trees, or even a San Antonio park, there's a lot of grains melt, just to increase the amount of trees. And I know there's also services out there where they will maintain the tree for you for the first few years, whatever, to get it established, so that we don't have to rely on the residents to do it when they're, they don't, they have other priorities. But I don't know if the urban forestry program, I think, you know, possible.
So I think, of course, anything is possible. Those wanting to bring up in my previous city, and I'm sure are probably worse for us, is the cost of tree astronomical. It's so expensive, which is not a problem, it's just that council has. When they get impressed by bugs, which is a regular current, and they need to be treated or removed. There's this increased liability associated with it, especially if it not watered properly, when it's fall, injure a person, injure a car, the city is liable for all of that. So, and the tree maintenance cost that my previous agency double-digit increased here over here, where it almost. So I'm not, I just want you to understand the realities of this, I would say would be something that you should assign, if you're interested, you should assign it to staff. You should go understand what all the costs associated with various levels. Is it just, hey, if you want to plant a tree in your backyard or front yard, the city will buy you a tree tree? Or is it that you want to go through a very comprehensive program on planting trees and beating up parts? And then we will want to give you like a five-year forecast of here's how that cost is going to grow, how are you going to fund that? Because that is definitely a ongoing cost that I guarantee will entice us later. How much does it cost now for us to maintain the existing tree in our city? Do we have an ongoing cost? I don't know if we have it off the top of our head.
It was the company called Great Scott.
Yeah, Great Scott, yeah, we do work with Great Scott, yeah.
I did just want to point out, but our lighting and median maintenance district fund that will be charged additional assessment on property tax bills does include $25,000 in its budget each year as it has for the last several years for trees. And I think when this issue came up, and of course, we've had staff turnover since then, it was let staff do what they can with that money and see if, you know, that level of effort brought, satisfied the council, but I don't know how much a tree is.
A tree probably, you know, maybe $500 or so, or depending on the type of tree, too. One thing I would recommend here, if you're looking at, looking long-term, would be a tree master plan. That would give you the programmings, the maintenance, the, what kind of tree you want to put in the park with, because one of the things about the trees, they live the sidewalk. So you want to make sure you look at the big picture, maintenance, how are we going to maintain the tree, where are the trees needed? So that would be my recommendation, if we do want to look at something more broader, would be to start with a tree master plan that would outlay capital of the future for this, for trees here in the city's sense.
And a tree master plan, I'm guessing a consultant would work on that? And do you know if there's a ballpark amount of cost that would be?
I. No, it's, I would have to, I mean, to give you a proper, I would have to look and research that. I mean, right now, store master plan, you know, is, you know, almost $800,000. Store master plan is you're looking at $600,000 budget right now. So it, it's, you know, I don't, you know, probably around that ballpark, but, you know, not much.
And our current budget would probably do a master plan, so we can start with asking them what the cost would be.
And then I just stepped into our budget module, and the annual cost for tree trimming for our existing inventory is in the general fund budget at a cost of $25,000 a year. So as we increase our inventory, the maintenance of that would cost, it'd go up with the market of CBI as well.
I would really like for us to consider having a tree master plan. And let's look at the cost, how much it would be. Actually, I have it.
I have another question, trees that are covered by pollinators.
Yeah, there's a lot of that.
Okay, so is there a motion? This is a new item.
For the urban forestry, for a tree master plan?
I, I heard specifically.
Always a motion.
That doesn't happen. And the motion is a cost estimate on a tree master plan, right?
Want to create a cost estimate for this? Can we get a cost estimate for the concrete fitting, city hall, LED lighting? And a parking structure cover at the top with solar panels that would reduce our.
The roof is with.
But then the parking, it would shake without all the fans.
Cindy Quirk, do you want to restate that?
So let's move forward with the first one. Yeah, we'll just across that and then on the tree and after. We have a motion by Councilmember Warren, a second by Mayor Fordham. All in favor? Any opposed? Karen, that.
Okay, and the mayor and Leah motion, after we finish talking about these latest new items, would like to go back in order and go through the decision packages.
We'd like to move forward with Councilmember Warren for question. So again, Ms. Warren, you wanted to get a cost estimate on refitting city hall for LED lighting as well as insulation of solar panels, either on the roof of the parking structure or city hall. So we have a motion by Warren, do we have a second for the?
I'll second that.
We have a second by Mayor Fordham, that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Karen, that. Michelle, if you want to start again from the general fund, I think, with the exception by the seven, which have already been lumped in.
Is there any opposition from the rest of the council to go back to that? Oh, okay. Are there any other new items that the council wants to bring up? I'm going to.
Yeah, I'm sure.
There are only discrepancies that our projector does not have access to the ESG right, but we can see on a.
Oh, it won't show up here?
No, because this is a secured line.
Okay, okay, actually, don't worry about it. Okay, so let's go, I apologize, let's go. So number one was a city council stipend. So as I mentioned, the council last approved an increase of the stipend in January first of 2009, 15 years ago. Current stipend is $850. It can be increased by up to any percentage between 0 and 75%. Any increase would not take effect until January first of 2025. 10% would move the stipend from $850 a month to $935. So to raise it to 1,000 would be a 17.6% increase.
Currently, as the candidates, the discussion is to increase the stipend to 17.6%.
I'll move it. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mayor Fordham Taylor, a second by, excuse me, Councilmember Taylor, a second by Councilmember Warren. I will proceed with a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, I don't know if we have enough votes to pass. The opposition by a mayor, Shabbra, opposition by mayor, and Van in the conference. Come, Councilmember Ford.
All right, is there an item to scale? Is there another motion on the floor for this item?
I would like to increase it 10%.
10% would be $935.
I make a motion, we increase the salary to City Council by 10%.
Okay.
I'll say.
For the Blue Bowl, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I can just deal with the end.
I've got it here, I've got benefit.
Any other action on the side of the council? Karen, that, we'll move on to item number two. Item number two, City Council travel conference meetings budget, staff recommendation to increase by $4,000 from $11,000 to $15,000 to address the overage constraints this year.
I think we should be the same. It's only $4,000.
I should improve it, because I feel like, especially with a newer council member, it makes sense that we'll be bothered. There's a necessity to have, we're seeing that tree. Seems like, you know, we're already exceeding it.
It's small now.
I'll motion to have, have it as written, so I guess half the budget is $10,000 here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Karen, that, I, four will tie into.
Item number three is an employee cost of living allowance of 4% and a cost of $172,000.
Is that a fair amount that we need to consider?
Yeah, I went through and looked at this and looked at our branding studies, and I think this is fair. If it increased more than that, I probably would have a problem.
Public might have a problem. We did 8% last year.
Oh. It hasn't happened in a while to me.
That's what I'm saying, is to do 8% and do another big one, my doctor's, I think probably might. We did, we did eight, we also launched a low escape, so that our city, the whole city is up.
The mayor would like to make a motion to, uh, briefly. The mayor would like to make a motion to approve a cost of living allowance of 5%. No, sorry, not to exceed 5%. Oh, anything in, so it would be anything in between 4% to 5%.
Do you know what the dollar allowance if it were 5%?
Yes.
And each one, that is.
It's each one is $40,000, right? $43,000, $400,000. Two, thirteen?
Okay, I, I agree with Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with 5%. I'm agreeing with you too.
A motion by the mayor, second by Vice.
Aye.
By 5% more.
So we have, again, a motion by Mayor Shabbra, a second by Mayor Van for 85% for item number three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Karen, that, I don't think we have it.
Item number four, this is a request from Human Resources to make salary market adjustments for three classifications that are severely out of line for the market in terms of if we have to reveal those positions and the request for a part-time HR analyst. Ongoing costs will be $100,000.
Given that, generally, we have so many vacancies, I think it makes sense for us to have these adjustments, because we do want to hire quality people that stay, people like that. I, I fully support this, I mean, I hope the rest of the council will, I will make a motion for that.
I'll say.
I'm going to give that to Councilmember Taylor, I heard it was first. I'm just going to pass it, I want your acceptance. So we have a motion by Mayor Van, a second by Councilmember Taylor, all in favor?
Aye.
Karen, all of, any opposed? Karen, that, we work with Ivan Ford.
Item number five is related to contractor services. The city, in its current operating budget has budget $40,000. We just went out to R to be more enhanced IT contractor services. I think this is absolutely something the council should invest in. Obviously, you're all aware of the dangers of having a weak IT infrastructure system and security. We're requesting an additional $110,000 to be added to the existing $40,000 budget for total of $150,000, which will still be one of the lowest I've seen contracts in Porch County for contract services.
I think since we went up to one person, it would be easy enough to do this. So I will make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, they are, they are just jumping on companies. What if they're, yeah, they're old and rammed, so they're, you know, just that long.
Yes, David, so we have a motion by Councilmember Taylor, a second by Councilmember Ford to, to, if I can buy it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Karen, that, I invite them forward.
Item six is related to strategic plan update slash goal setting. As I mentioned, the council has looked at its strategic plan in 2013, 2015, 2019. In 2019, the expectation being that was a two-year plan. Would the council like to work with updating the strategic plan in this upcoming fiscal year? And if so, would the council like to hire a consultant to facilitate that process? The mayor is recommending no consultant, if he, he is making a motion to conduct the exercise in-house.
So that, that means, would that be conducted by our city manager, or who would be?
Would probably be the city manager, which is fine. I'm not having those do it.
I would, I can agree with that.
How would that impact the budget on those?
The budget would go away.
I'll second that. So we have a motion by Councilmember Ford, a second by Mayor Fordham Van, to proceed with the strategic plan update, with the consultant and the white house staff. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Karen, that, item six can forward.
Thank you, and we already took action on item number seven, we'll move on to item number eight, Dotson Park slash have repairs. I already explained this issue earlier, the council have any questions for staff?
So if we proceed with this, how soon will Dotson Park have a function?
Yeah, sorry, I'm hoping it would probably be maybe three to four months, because we're out of it, it's parts we have to get right. So that's just right now what we're thinking. And TAP was still installing it too, so part delay and installing, so that's maybe three, four months.
So the cycle, they're not going to have it. Okay, the mayor would like to make a motion that we shut down Old Squash Cut for this summer and then look at replacing that amenity with something that will not require the same amount of maintenance.
Cost of worry? I think initially he's saying shut it down, don't, don't spend the $40,000 to repair it, and that I get future for, you know, maybe that those are the ways. I, I do have to say that Dotson Park is in a very unique community. It's right across from our park, there are a high number of residents, such as Section 8. So I think there's a very needed amenity, and I know a lot of members who use that park, want to roll back some tools, always, they're rather on air conditioning levels. I think this is a very essential surface and a big central amenity for that community. And I would hate to see something that is so well-loved by a community that's so underserved to not, to not be replaced by something equipped. So I, I would be against shutting down the Smosh Hut, even though it costs us $4,000, so does Central Park. And nobody would say, oh, let's shut down the Smosh Hut or Central Park, you know? I, I feel like this is a very greatly appreciated and well-used amenity that that specific And nobody would say, oh, let's shut down the splash pad or Central Park, you know, I feel like this is a very greatly appreciated and well-used amenity that's specifically committed. Especially with the fleet and everything, I would be against getting rid of that splash pad.
Yeah, I'm gonna make it. It leaves more forty thousand dollars and then it's just wasting it. That thing is gone. And other people, they just keep returning it. I like to take the forty thousand. Tomorrow we'll go out and get somebody to replace it and start construction and break down. And they try now when we can do it, because they're like, we're just wasting money. We may not have a place to replace it, we're terrified of going on and on and on.
So why is it that the splash pad at Dotson Park is in such horrible condition compared to the splash pad at Central Park? Kind of the same thing.
Yeah, that's currently what we're working with contractor, you know, with the contractor as Tim mentioned, Tim mentioned that we're a little disappointed with the performance of the current contractor. So we're working with them and there are those same questions, that same questions I had for two hundred we get here. So we're, that's part of investigation to rush up. Like, maybe three or four months, yeah, just depending on materials.
Maybe we should ask them what it would cost just to replace the whole thing.
We did do that.
Maybe it has a whole, a different company.
There was a different.
It's gonna happen and they're gonna find some, on, 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 and again, they're going to die next year. I know that company. Yeah, I know that company. So I like your recommendation, let's try to find out who we talk, if somebody gets there, will the place ever take it again?
First by Mayor Shawna, second by Councilmember Taylor, all in favor to try and find another, so five to get a house, that's not moving and replacing it slash everything. With a similar amenity. All in favor?
All.
Any opposed? Karen, then, item four will move forward. Item nine, these are the community service events, you can see they're listed eight through E. Again, these were items that were heard over the year from various stakeholders we have. These are not together, we heard we want more senior field trips and there was a distinction made, Community Services Director mentioned earlier, that we could do more local. There was a specific request at our last talk on the block at the Lollapark, the Lollapark for further away senior field trips and excursion. There's a separately requested for family field trips and excursion. There is a request for State of the City, a request for Taste of Stanton, a request for volunteer picnic recognition, and eighth grade graduation celebration. So each of these were initially budgeted at six thousand per item. So council can work with that. So the mayor is recommending the budget of thirty thousand dollars is approved, but we would ask for half to be sponsored by local sponsors.
So that means we would double the amount of money we spend on each event.
Oh, I'm sorry, we would put in fifteen and we'd get sponsorships of fifteen.
Try to reduce to thirty, we have thirty.
I wanted to ask, I know that I saw this lie on Community Services Department, interesting amounts, events they have going on and all the services they provide. And it's just, they have something almost every month, if not every week. And so do we have the capacity and in our calendar to actually fit all these new things in? And I don't know if someone responded to that, because I really don't want to impose and dictate something on it, it really doesn't make sense given our calendar.
Thank you for your question, I appreciate that, the staff you're working hard. I think there's opportunities to maybe, you know, if the community is asking for these types of functions, we could maybe piggyback on their event. We could be creative about how we do a seasonal stretch capacity too thin. It is hard to do standalone events as well in our, like to a holiday or a full establishment city. So we could be creative about some of these things.
And included in that six thousand dollars was additional overtime hours, because recognizing after what you addressed, our staff cannot take on these additional, so we would need to have more human resources.
Zinni and I were talking the other day and like she was saying combining these events, because we were talking about combining Taste of Stanton with the arch and. The, it's the case of deep city for Stanton.
Combining with somebody on the go this night.
I'll move it.
I'll say.
Okay, so the motion is to, is it to move with the thirty thousand dollars of city funding or the sponsorship plus?
Why don't we do the thirty thousand dollars of city funding and then if we can get sponsors, then that will reduce our cost.
I have a motion by Mayor Earp, Councilmember Warren, second by Councilmember Taylor, for the thirty thousand city funding and should the city get sponsorship, it would reduce costs. All in favor?
All.
Any opposed? Karen, then, item nine moves forward. Item number ten, Community Services, this was a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Love Our Cities Service Day, which would include five service projects.
Moving.
Second.
There's a motion by Mayor Shawna, second by Councilmember Warren, for those, all in favor?
All.
Any opposed? Karen, then, item ten moves forward. Thank you, item eleven, Community Services, Parks and Recreation Commission, recommendation to allow for two utility art boxes at a cost of six thousand dollars.
Again, the Lions Club would probably be one of those, Boys and Girls Club would probably be one of those. And so we could get our overall cost down if we had sponsors and support for charities, so.
How many utility boxes do we have?
So we currently have twenty-six that were identified.
Mayor also suggested it might be a great Eagle Scout project.
I know other cities, schools, you can adopt those in that private service school. I'll make a motion to move this for the six thousand dollars with the hopes that it comes down to a thousand.
Would it be possible for us to, because I'm guessing the six thousand is the staff time and the cost of painting those two art boxes? Would it be possible for us to, I guess, instead of having it that way, have staff open up all twenty-six and three months' sponsorship to connect from the community and then maybe not specify that two boxes? Or just the program itself, the art box program?
Councilmember, if I can answer, so some of the costs, we did a survey of surrounding cities as we worked through the commission. So the model is the vinyl wrap, because it is cost-effective and for fee removal, we talked to our maintenance department. So long-term and in compliance with some of the locations that are, you know, following different public rights of ways. We could pursue the paint, it's just in the cities that we spoke to. The quality and, you know, long-term, it doesn't last as much.
I agree with that. And the mayor, once again, saying Eagle Scouts could raise the money to provide on that. That's part of their project.
I'm sure the R D would do more if they would. I'm gonna make a motion to move it for six thousand dollars and not all of that, that's about six thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Warren, second by Councilmember Taylor, all in favor? All, any opposed? Item eleven moves forward. Item twelve, Park Construction Restriping, so as we mentioned, we made contact with a student who wants to do the project, he wants to do the entire project. And we think our supplies costs are going to be about two thousand dollars, so I guess the request now is the council to give us two thousand dollars in supplies for the park construction restraining project.
I'll move it.
Second. There's a motion by Councilmember Taylor, second by Mayor Van to approve the two thousand dollars in supplies to item twelve, all in favor? Any opposed? Forward. Thank you for your question. Okay, the final one on the opposed list, number thirteen, Catherine Street Sidewalk Completion, I explained this issue earlier this evening, does it help with the additional question? Yes, there's a question for. Oh.
Caesar, what would be the scope and sequence of the project?
Yes, first, we would design it, and then once we have the design, we'd get the cost estimate as well. And then go out for a bid, getting bids, because we probably under, then see if we can get bids from contractors and then construction will get. We have, first is, then we can figure out, you know, what's going to require, so.
I know that last election season before that, I walked that neighborhood and made a map of everything in the neighborhood that was broken, the sidewalks going all that. We went through and repaired all that and that topic never came up, so it's supposed to be a new batch. Do you know, like sidewalk, is it six foot, is it ten feet, how long is the sidewalk?
On my, this is, it would probably be, around ten, it's pretty wide. Yeah, ten to twelve feet.
Caesar, do you know when the house was completed?
No, no, I mean, before my time.
And it just was never completed, correct, when they?
Correct, yeah, there was some development to the east, development to the right, and it was never constructed at that time.
I'm just pulling up Google Maps and measuring it online and it seems to indicate there's six or five of the sidewalks. True?
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have to survey it and lay it out, so, and plus we have the curb gutter, so usually you have a gutter fence, it's about two feet. So, yeah, we designed it, make sure, you know, because at both ends, you're matching both the sites there is existing, so we just match what exists.
Is the thirty thousand dollars realistic with that project?
Yeah, I mean, that's just right now, you know, with these cost estimates we come up with and we look at the design and then construction, I think right now, I mean, that's just, we're ballpark right now.
Caesar, the mayor is asking if we're sure that that's the city's responsibility, he thinks that some of those homes may have been responsible for providing their own sidewalk?
I could look at that, look at the right way, you know, make sure that, you know, your public right way and everything.
So we can certainly check the right way, obviously, if it's not the city's responsibility, we can report back to the council. But if we assume that it is the city's responsibility, it would be, the council would make a motion.
I'll move it.
There's a motion by Councilmember Taylor, second by Mayor Van, and in public right way, responsibility, and then not to exceed thirty thousand dollars, all in favor?
All.
Any opposed? Karen, then, item four. Okay, so I've been keeping a tally, so just to let, to clarify some adjustments, so we had a add of forty-three thousand dollars for item number three. We had a deduct of fifteen thousand dollars for item number six. We had a deduct of five thousand dollars for item number seven. So overall, to the total requested and decision packages, that number changes from five twenty-nine eighty to five fifty-two eighty. So that still leaves you a remaining balance of approximately two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We talked about a couple of different ideas tonight, where you tasked that to go and get cost estimates, get feasibility for different projects. Michelle, would you recommend if the council wants us to report back that we don't unallocate these remaining surplus funds in case they want to take action on one of these research projects later on? Yes, okay, can we pass the mic over to Michelle?
Yes, I think that would be prudent. So we have the response back to your estimates. Also, the city manager, what about number eight, where it sounded like the direction was not to repair the forty thousand dollar Dotson Park, but to get an estimate.
Correct, you're right, so actually.
And we reduced the number twelve by two thousand, by eight thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. My computer died, but that was the notes I had before I died.
Thank you, that's correct.
Did we not get any approval for the beginning of the year?
So that was number fourteen, Councilwoman Taylor motion, Councilmember Torres, seconded. So we got a, we're gonna report back to the council depending on what the employee by label certification requests are. However, if nobody comes through, the recommendation or the direction of council was to pursue a contracting service to provide Vietnamese translation services to run not to exceed a thirty thousand.
What's the pros and cons of contractors?
The contract would probably give us more consistency because they'll have a number of employees, they'll have a stable of people, whereas we probably get, we probably end up paying a little bit more, but you'll have more consistency. Whereas if you hired a part-time employee, you could probably get more hours for the same amount, but they could leave, they could be sick, we might not have, you know, availability, so.
To look at, I don't know.
Sorry, you're having money.
I wanted to, I talked to you about this, I wanted to just test on fans across a vital way that has no railroad tracks. The homeless are just there all the time, in shape of it. Cypress has it in a lot of areas, they're not cutting through the fence or anything like that. It might cut down some of the doors our sheriffs have to do and our outreach work is, it's just a place where they're there all the time. We shoo them away from there, give them tickets, but they're back the next day or even that night, sleeping again. It's between, it's between Knott and Western. It's close to Kermore, it's where public storage. And the condos. Just, just bins on the side and let's see if it works, because we did that in a lot of other areas, including that one. People would be camping in there and they'd be trapped, they leave so much trash, it's just incredible.
The mayor is concerned that we don't have the right to sell events, so that's. But he has discussed it with them for their consideration, and they're, and they're willing to consider it.
Could we investigate that and see what they said?
At the council's direction, yeah.
I'll make a motion for that.
So the motion is to continue conversations with U P R C about the feasibility of establishing a fence and not.
Say, pay won't pay, I think we should pay.
Correct, allowing us to install a fence along and, oh wait, let me just clarify, along Knott and Western.
It's a, yeah, it's a freeway right away from Knott to Western, Knott, depending on you want to look at it. It's right by the public storage on Knott and it's right in front of Stafford's Central Park.
Yeah, so, yeah, I agree, so for a sixty-foot right away right there, we'd look at one side, we'd give like fifteen thousand for one, and then on the other side, so we do both sides, we like, I would say right on budget, approximately about thirty thousand to do both sides of the. What they gave, yeah, it would be included, so a twenty-foot wide gate in the middle on both sides and then the fencing along the other side. This would be just for a chain link fence, to be, just to be clear, so.
Something is tough, I mean, they couldn't cut the water pipe, something.
I mean, we could look at other, just right now, just cost estimate for a chain fence for sixty-foot right away is about fifteen thousand for one side, so just double that for the other side there.
So is, okay, so this will be one of the items. Okay, so if approved, this would be one of the items, so actually I don't want to work on that with cost estimate. The council can then decide based on the surplus that's remaining, how you want to allocate it across these various potential projects? Oh wait, yes, that's another question.
I just wanted to ask, do you remember if you want to implement pay cuts out of power from, from your efforts?
Thank you for the question. I have concerns about the chain link component of it, but obviously that's a pretty baseline for a quote. I think the chain link fence would be doing there pretty quickly, I think we realistically would need to have a higher amount budgeted to have the type of gauge fence that you see at, in some of the. I think we realistically would need to have a higher amount budgeted to have the type of gauge fence that you see at, in some of the county access areas. A thicker gauge black fence where they have any impact there. I don't believe the chain link would. I like the idea of having it there. I think it, what we typically see is that sometimes there will still be individuals that get in and get out, but the, all of the items and trash and debris that Mr. Taylor mentioned, that that is highly, highly limited with good fencing.
I'm concerned with this idea that we want to do this side of the area.
Correct.
So maybe, maybe it's worse because they just, it's just a place where people try and sleep and do drugs.
So on the green trash. But I'm just worried that if you can travel, then we're gonna need a.
Oh, yeah. Let's start with Indian Pacific first.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make that motion.
By me, sorry, I'm so sorry. As, as a member of the Stanton Community Garden, we go through Stanton Park, and we go to Norm Ross, and go to our garden. And there's all this fencing in between. And I have to say, almost every single time I've visited the garden, there's an individual experience of homelessness around there. And sometimes to a point where our gardeners don't even want to start their gardening anymore. And there's all types of fencing and it doesn't, I'll be honest, it doesn't work. And they find some creative way to, you know, either get rid of it or maybe they go or go through it and it's really frustrating. And I know that we've allocated in the past like $19,000 for fencing around the garden area and it's not as effective as I hoping it could be. And so I am not optimistic and I hope that however it is the allocation. Or maybe you could test that in the garden. It would actually impact a lot of individuals to, you know, if using that service.
I heard a motion, I haven't heard a second yet. Okay, so substitute motion on the floor. Staff should go to the Pacific to get them to sponsor and place a fence and if not, staff will report back.
One of those black ones.
That's a, I heard a substitute motion, there's a second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Warren, second by Councilmember Taylor, all in favor? Any opposed? Councilmember Torres? All in favor? Mayor Lieutenant Van Damme?
Of those.
And Mayor Shaver? And favor? Item 12 forward with a four.
Any other items for discussion from the council?
How much money?
I think we're at about two. Going once, going twice. All right, well, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, council, for the direction. We'll be returning to you in June with a budget for you to adopt. We'll set our one ten for the next year. And with that, we'll turn it back over to Mayor Rosell.
Great. Thank you so much for all your patience and working through this whole thing together. With that, I will.